Please rise for invocation by Pastor Nathan Bueker of Victorious Life Church, followed by the pledge allegiance. Pastor, welcome.
Thank you so much. Let's pray, fellas. Father, thank you for this evening. Thank you for, Lord, this city. Thank you for these leaders that take good care of the community around them. Thank you for this meeting tonight. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance, your direction. We believe that, God, you have your eye upon this city. Your kindness, your favor, and your goodness is evident. We thank you for what you're going to do this evening. God, go with every person that speaks, Lord. We pray that your heart would be evident and that, God, your desire and your wishes would be pronounced over this city. We thank you for what's going to happen this evening and for the future. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk Carl Lurle.
Councilman Foley.
Here.
Councilman Gepfert.
Here.
Councilman Green.
Here.
Vice Mayor Grubbs.
Here.
Mayor Stilner.
Here. Five oh. Or all five? How about that? We passed being here, five oh. Very good. Great job so far. Off to a good start. All right. Item four, public comments on consent agenda items only. Any public comments on consent agenda items only? See none. Can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items five through 11?
Move to approve consent.
Good.
Move to approve consent agenda items five through 11.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Yeah, clerk call the roll.
Councilman Foley.
Yes.
Councilman Gepfert.
Yes.
Councilman Green.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grubbs.
Yes.
Mayor Stilner.
Yes. Consent passes five oh. Moving on to item number 12, Parks and Recreation Appreciation Month. How about that? We're going to have our Parks and Recreation Director and one of the most famous characters of all, RecMan, come on down here to the front while I read this proclamation. First of all, I just want to compliment you and your staff as well as everybody in the city that participated in the Fourth of July festivities and event. It takes a lot to pull off an event like that at the city center complex, and it was fabulous. The weather held off, which was great, and it was a very well-attended event. So, thank you guys for everything you do for that. All right, let me read this proclamation real quick. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Port Orange, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and encouraging physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles; and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and is the leading provider of health meals and nutrition services and education; and whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction; and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and create outdoors memories, and I add that part, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And now, therefore, I, Scott Stilner, Mayor of the City of Port Orange, Florida, do hereby recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month. Thank you, guys, for everything that you do. Director Livallo, you are welcome to have any comments you want to make. I know how much you like getting involved.
I just want to thank the council for always supporting our parks and recreation programs and initiatives in the city, so thank you very much.
She's always spot on. How about a RecMan? Come on. Hey, guys. RecMan. Hey, RecMan. Parks and parks. Okay. All right, public participation, non-agenda items. I think some of these might have been on consent, but let's go through them real quick. Lori Becker? Hey, Lori, how are you? Come on up.
Good evening, council. Lori Becker, 865 Christie Drive. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I did notice something on here that I wanted to mention.
Right ahead.
I am a representative of the Sugar Forest community, not just Sugar Forest, but around it as well, because I live on Christie Drive, and I am very happy to see that we now have some money for a buyout program. And there is a property, two properties in particular, Bear's Trail, that substantially flood every time that we have any kind of high water. And so, I just want to, at least, I want to encourage everyone up here that when you see that property come across your desk, that that is a property that is critical to trying to solve some of the flooding issues that we're having in that area. It borders, it's like almost four acres of property. It borders the ditch in question that's always back and forth between county and city regarding who maintains it. And even today, it's flooding with the amount of rain that we had. So, if the city can buy that property, then we'll have some control over cleaning the ditch, and it could be a big part of trying to save the at least 100 homes that we are all working towards with the other money that we attain from the state. So, I just want to say how important, how critical that property is to attain for a buyout. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
John Cameron. Welcome, John.
Evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I saw an item on the agenda tonight that came of interest to me, and that's about the golf course bunker renovation project. I believe you just redid the greens maybe five, six years ago, and at that time, the bunker renovation project was on that menu, but it was taken out. Value engineer. Well, now, here we are, tonight, you've already approved the process, getting ready to spend $280,000 to do bunkers, when we could have done it for less money at the time we renovated the greens, because we had all the staff there, we had all the materials there, we had the expertise there, we had the equipment there. So, now, we're getting ready to do tees, maybe. So, I'm just saying, better planning needs to be done so we can save money on these projects. And also, we should consider asking Kemper to try to do some of this stuff for us. They can renovate bunkers. I know it'll cost the city, but maybe we should do a cost comparison. I know Darren is very experienced, and he's got great expertise, and I have great confidence in Jeff. Darren is overseeing this bunker project, according to the contract. He will be the onsite administrator of it. So, his expertise is already there. Now, the money's already ready to be spent, so I think that a person like Darren could oversee the tee project, and we could ask him about, and Kemper, what it would cost to look at these tees, which ones they could renovate themselves in-house, what would be required. Now, to me, playing that golf course several times, many of the tees just need to be stripped, leveled, reshaped, reconfigured, maybe expanded. Some of that requires a different expertise, but some of the tees might be able to do on in-house. And also, other things to be considered should be removing some trees in shady areas. That's a big problem out there in a few holes. That's why you've got problems. The tees aren't big enough. They don't get enough shade. So, that's why you're having problems with some of these tees out there. So, I just ask you to consider that and pass it on to staff. Hopefully, we can do a little better job of putting this all together. My way of thinking is when we closed the course several years ago to do the greens, we could have spent the money at the same time to redo all that and saved ourselves quite a bit of money, because we were closed. So, now, we're going to interrupt play with these projects. Now, I know it's going to be minimal, but still, it's interrupting play, and, you know, we never want to do that. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
I have 13 council member comments. I'm going to go first on this tonight. I'm going to ask the city manager to give us some feedback here. We recently received some really, really good news out of Tallahassee about our city receiving some appropriation funds this year, and, you know, we definitely have to take an opportunity to thank our state representatives, Representative Chase Tremont and Senator Tom Wright, as well as Senator Tom Leek as being heavy advocates for us in Tallahassee, and I certainly want to make sure I take the opportunity to thank our staff. Our staff put in a tremendous amount of time this year. I don't know in my time that we've ever received as much state appropriation money as we've received this year, but we received $4.4 million in appropriation funds, which already have matching funds ready to go with that, so it's close to $9 million that's going to allow us to advance some projects forward and also start focusing on funding for projects to follow those or even parallel them. And we've got a lot of other, there's a lot of funding sources, and there's a lot of strategy involved, and there's a lot of cities in the state of Florida that compete for the same dollars and as well as here in Volusia County. So, it's a very competitive process, and I want to thank our city manager and our staff, because after Ian, before we even heard the dirty name Milton, they already were working on a strategy on how we would put the city in a really good position to be able to compete for these dollars, and getting a stormwater master plan done was right up there. In fact, I believe we were the first city to get it going and get it done. So, I know a lot of other cities that didn't get funding at all. Some of them were even asking for funding to get a stormwater master plan going, because they hadn't even started that. So, you know, I truly appreciate our staff getting us ahead of the curve. But I want to give the city manager a chance to weigh in on this. If you could, Wayne, make some comments. What does this mean for us? What are the next steps with regard with these two projects? If you can just touch on them, and I apologize for putting you on the spot, but I didn't want to pass up an opportunity to, let's just have a brief conversation about that.
We've got a slide in the budget presentation, too, that'll show some of that with the extra dollar. So, it is, as far as I know, the largest appropriation we've had at 4.4 million. So, 3 million of it is in support of construction of the Sugar Forest Pepper Hill area stormwater project, and the other 1.4 is the master lift station that's over in Ponce Inlet. So, we have the regional stations that people drain, or the sewer drains to, and then it comes back. So, that's where that one, that's the other project. We've gotten 3.5 million in a prior year, one 750,000. I think there was one other 1.5. So, it's the largest that I'm aware of, and certainly in modern history. I think the stormwater master plan had a lot to do, as we were sitting there, meeting individually with legislators and their staff, and showing them an engineered plan where we had modeled these programs and showed them, this will work. We had already acquired a piece of land in the area that we were intending to use as the storage area to put the pumps in to work from, and showing them that with that much level of direction. I think they respond well to, if you get money from the state, because why is this a state issue to solve, not a local, you better use it. And so, being able to show to them, we have committed all of this. We have plans. We know it will work. We own land. We have money aside. I think that's what pushes us to the top, is that they know if they put money in Port Orange, Port Orange will put it into their community and make a difference. One of the prior ones we had was the Commonwealth area water line, and we went in there, we have upsized two-inch water pipes to six-inch, put fire hydrants in there, and we were showing them that this year as part of the visits, is, you know, we actually took them pictures of those areas where we've upgraded the water lines and shown them that. So, I think that's a major positive. The design is underway for that, the project in Sugar Forest. It's a fairly complicated project, because you've got to take the water that's in that area, it kind of splits in a basin. Some of it goes to the east to Nova, some of it goes to the west, and push it towards that pond, and then pump it back towards the east. So, the design's a little complicated to do that. That's going on now. The anticipated construction start would be in the first quarter of '27, so it'll be designed throughout now in '26 with construction to follow. When we get to the budget, I'll have a slide that shows you how we break down the total cost of paying for that project.
Okay. Yeah, that particular project is going to be one heck of a construction project, for sure. Can you also touch on, for the benefit of the council, there was an email that came, I don't know if everybody got it, about additional funding sources that may be available for municipalities to pursue, but Volusia is exempt because of the amount of money that was provided into the Transform 386. Is that right? So, that particular money that they're referring to is already allocated to Volusia?
The federal government provides a lot of money passed through. Some of it goes to the state, some of it goes to the counties, and so, the CDBG program allocated a good amount of money per storm to Volusia County, and then they have their programs, what they call Transform 386. So, as an entitlement community, they get this money, and then they choose how to distribute it, and so, that's how Volusia County is getting the funds out of that program, and then our applications will be through their Transform 386, as opposed to Port Orange applying for it directly. Some of the benefit, too, is that they have much bigger staff in larger areas, so they can assist us in all the contracting and all the paperwork to set it up and project management. So, there's a benefit in working with the county, and that, one, they can help with the cost of the things that are multi-jurisdictional, and they also help with the management of the projects. But that's, that money is something, we're going to get our money through the CDBG Transform 386 program.
Okay. Anybody have anything you want to add or weigh in on this, on that particular issue?
No, I just want to say that I've been to Tallahassee for other issues through the Florida Realtors Association, and you've got some, I think there's a million members strong, and they prepare all these talking points to go to see your legislators, and I was more impressed with our staff's presentation than I saw from the Florida Realtors back in 2006 and 2005. Thank you, Junos, and obviously, our city manager. They worked their tails off, and I got to witness how they represented Port Orange personally, being in Tallahassee with Scott and the two of them, and it worked. And it's not always going to be there, but we got it, and now, we could start working towards the relief that our homeowners are asking us for. So, I just appreciate that work that you've put into it, and then the county, our city council, prior to us being elected, making decisions, hard decisions, to put money into those studies. So, we were prepared to go there, and that's, and we're going to talk a lot about tonight. We're going to talk about money and preparation for future events and how we prepare ourselves. And this is exactly the benefit of being prepared, and so, I appreciate that, that our prior councils had the foresight to be prepared, and the benefit was the receiving of those funds. And it's going forward, too, with asking money from the county. We're prepared, our studies are done, we know what we can do with it. We're in a better position, so I appreciate y'all doing that.
Yeah, and I also, I don't want to forget, I also want to thank the residents and the business owners that also reached out to our state representatives and senators. That makes a world of difference to have that kind of support and help from the residents as well, and I know quite a few did that also. And it was a, it was a very interesting thing on the final day, as we were all sitting there, watching our laptops, and Wayne and I were touching base a couple of times. I touched base with Robin, and we saw the word that the governor had vetoed almost $600 million, and I'm like, oh, man, this is not going to be good. And it was right up almost till 5:00 before we got the final confirmation that we had been awarded that money. So, it's really, it's a good thing. It's a good start. It's going to be very beneficial, and hopefully, we can get that money to good use as quickly as possible. All right, moving on. The only other thing I had is that Friday night, this is a good news part, Friday night, July 25th, at the Daytona Tortugas, is going to be Port Orange night, Ponce Inlet night, and Daytona Beach shores night. So, there should be ticket offers on the website for the Daytona Tortugas. Again, that is Friday night, July the 25th at 6:30. So, Lance, how about it?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing, huh? All right. Sean.
Yeah, I want to talk about the Parks and Recreation Department and the staff from our safety and firefighters, police officers, and anyone who participated in our July 4th event to pull that off. The most remarkable thing that I witnessed was how we got so many people who had been taken all day long to get there, out of there in a matter of about 15 minutes. It was amazing. So, I appreciate that. I also appreciated one of our citizens calling, ended up calling Lakeside Center just to compliment the city, and we don't get many compliments, us, on this council. That was a real nice one, and that's just testament to the hard work that went into that. So, it was a phenomenal show, and I appreciate everyone doing that. Also, wanted to make a suggestion. Someone had brought it to my attention that a good opportunity where we have events at the parks, baseball games, soccer games, would there be an opportunity for us to have charging stations for electric vehicles at those locations where we could generate some revenue from them? I just think that's something maybe we could look into, because they're there for an hour and a half, maybe two hours, and it might be an opportunity where we can provide a service to our citizens while they're sitting there, opposed to sitting over at Target or, you know, one of the other pavilion. Hey, I'm going to the park, I'm driving a Tesla, enough people are doing it now, they're, I see them parked over there. Maybe we can look at providing that service for a fee, of course, and maybe it helps generate some revenue. I don't know how that whole thing works, but it's just an idea someone posed that. I thought it was a really good idea. That's all I've got tonight.
Tracy, go ahead.
I say, I know y'all have touched on this, but the fireworks display was absolutely awesome, and if you missed it, you missed it. It was spectacular. But I definitely want to thank Parks and Recs. But Parks and Recs did a phenomenal job, but Police Department, Fire Department did a phenomenal job also, keeping everybody flowing out of the areas they're not supposed to be in and keeping everybody safe. So, thank you to everybody involved in that process. Park and Recs want to get a bigger shout-out also. Here is the Willa One Park area, where we had the community come together and put some voting in on the park and how it's designed. Went down there to that event, over 50, 60 citizens showing up to that, walking through and seeing the boards that the contractor put out, for them to see how things could be transformed and being able to vote on that. It's a phenomenal ideal, and I think hopefully, with the other parks initiatives coming up, is that ideal moves forward, because you've got to be able to look at a concept, put a dot on it of which concept you think is going to be best for that area. So, very great way for input from the citizens on that. On consent agenda tonight, 6E and 6F was talking about sourcing of striping. Something to think about, this is what we did a year ago for concrete work, where we actually have two strippers now involved to come out to stripe. That way, we can get ahead of that process, so we're not lagging behind. One of the things that I want to make sure that council knows is, you know, it was $80,000 budget, not to disk $80,000 budget. That's a small penance of what needs to be done for striping, for improving crosswalks and safety for the kids and the stop bars. Might be something that we look forward next year, not this year, because budget's already tightened up pretty good, but we have the two striping sources. They're going to go through that money and have that done within the first two months. So, we definitely need to look at that budget and refining that, so we can get safety done in the crosswalks. And then, big thanks to Juno for staffing at Lakeside Community Center with Stormwater Management for Sugar Forest and having everybody out there. He did a phenomenal job presentation-wise on that. He's still standing, didn't get beat up. I was there watching it all play out, and the community coming out and having some fantastic talks on that subject, but ultimately, it gets down to dollars and cents. And I know we talked about this, we just had Wayne talk about this, but one of the other funding sources is Resilient Florida coming up. Want to point out to council just some quick and dirty raw numbers for Resilient Florida. They're matching 50%. We have approximately nine major projects that Stormwater Management Plan came out with to a tune of about $76 million. So, if we take $76 million and you divide that into half, that means 38 million the city has to come up and figure out. We right now sit on approximately $12 million. That has been 4.4 from the city, selling of properties and other avenues and Hurricane Milton and our first one. Yeah. It's still stuck on Milton, coming out. So, we have about $12 million sitting, ready to go. We take that off the 38 million, that means we have about $26 million the city has to figure out. Not saying this is the direction to go, but it's an ideal for us to move forward. Out of $26 million, you've got 26,000 homes and businesses. If you take that number divided out by a 20-year bond, it's 50 bucks. $50 a year for 20 years onto the citizens would take care of the $76 million that we need to do all nine projects. So, as we move forward, keep those numbers in your head of how we can get about doing it. Am I saying going forward with a bond? No. So, let's look at how much money we can gather first before we have to go towards a bond. That way, we can take as much money in from other entities first before we have to move forward. But right now, on a 20-year bond, we're only talking $50 a residence to be able to take care of our citizens. That's all I've got.
Mr. Foley, you're right ahead.
All right. Well, I want to make sure, I also just say thank you to our representatives in Tallahassee, you know, Chase Tremont, Tom Wright and Tom Leek. Appreciate their hard work and staff, everyone going up there. Wish I would have got to go this year. It's the first year I've missed, and you guys still did fantastic. 4.4 million is not a small amount of money, so kudos to everybody involved on that. I want to let you guys know that I will be out of town for August 5th, although that will be my last one. I think I'm going to miss the entire year, so I'm excited to have life get back to normal for me here. I wanted to give a shout-out to staff as well for today. As y'all know, we've had some pretty heavy rains, and when I met with Wayne for lunch, we had crews all over the city going around and seeing actual hands-on in the field what was draining, what was not, where was water moving, and I really appreciate that we have a staff that's being so active and going out here and monitoring these things, especially as we're moving forward with everything. But we had crews all over the city checking out all the problematic areas today while it was still raining, and I think they deserve a shout-out for that. And the last thing, I think you guys may want to just ask Matt one-on-one about this at some point. During a fire pension meeting recently, there was something the attorney brought up about maybe a concern that the ordinance didn't match what was agreed to and that it needed to be edited. Matt has since looked at that and gone outside council and has an opinion on it, which he has shared with me. He may have shared that with you guys already, I'm not sure, but just, you may want to get with him one-on-one, because I found out today that is going to be discussed at the next fire pension meeting, so just something to have on your radars. All right?
Anything else?
That's it.
Wayne, on the, on the striping budget, is that something in future years that we could perhaps get with other municipalities in the area and put together like a, like a three or a four-city pay unit? Because I'm assuming that gets priced out by linear feet, right? So, you know, if New Smyrna and Daytona Beach Shores and Ponce Inlet and Port Orange all have so many linear feet, maybe does that make it more attractive in the bidding process? Save all four cities a little money? Is that something we could look at, or can that even be done? I don't know how that works.
It's possible. It's going to depend on workload, because in some cases, if you do it, the dominant city takes the work, and they, if we don't spend enough, we don't get there. So, it depends on how well we balance the total amount of budget. We have done, like our debris management, is we do work with Daytona Beach on that, and that has brought us a little more power in debris management. So, to the extent of any way we can get more done with that 80 grand, we'd be happy to talk to somebody about it, but...
Well, not even so much this year. I just mean, you know, in future budget years, because that's always an ongoing expense, and there'll always be that to do that. But anyway, just put that out there, and if that's something we can do, I think council will probably support that, for sure.
Okay.
All right. City Attorney.
Nothing further tonight.
That's it, huh? All right. And back to you, Mr. City Manager.
Just wanted to update you guys on the causely boat ramp, South ramps project. So, once we selected the contractor a few meetings back, they did the pre-con meeting, and in part of the conversation about the project, it came up that the lead times on the floating docks and the gangways, there's a couple of lead time items, it's going to take about six months to have made and...
there's a couple of lead time items, it's going to take about six months to have made and delivered to us. So where we were originally looking at a start date in August of this year, based on that, it's our recommendation, we don't start until first quarter of next year, so it would be January, to allow, instead of starting a project and then demobilizing and then bringing them back in there to let the season roll and then bring in in January. And one of the benefits too of coming to this point is, we had estimated the time, we try to be conservative because you don't want to overpromise and we had estimated it, it's somewhere nine to twelve months or so to finish the project. And then the pre-con, they're saying it's probably closer to the six to nine month range. So it's probably going to take a little less time to do it, but I don't think we should start it until we have the stuff ready to go. So you don't start and stop on it, you just start and finish.
And I had mentioned to the City Manager, I would really like the staff to stay on the hunt for a temporary solution. To try to at least get one gangway open would make a world of difference on the south side ramps. I know they, they looked at this before and they just couldn't find anything, but even a temporary solution, temporary floating dock, whatever, to be able to get one additional gangway open on that south side would be, would be very beneficial. But boating's not a, really a seasonal thing, well, it is, it lasts for twelve months in Florida. So, there's never a downtime, whenever the weather's nice, people want to get out and it is definitely quite the challenge.
Do we currently have a safety issue down there at all though Wayne? I mean, are we safe with what we have that we're going to now continue to use for six more months? I mean, that was my only concern, is going into the bid, we were going to go, basically going right to work pretty quick here in August and so now we're not and my whole worry was safety, are we safe?
I don't know that I want to say that it's unsafe, it's not ideal.
Okay.
Well, I think, I mean, I could speak to that a little bit, that I think that the folks that go down there where you've got somebody in the boat that's driving the boat on and off the trailer and somebody is just literally backing the trailer in the water, you don't need the gangway for that. But it's the folks that are going to go down there by themselves that have to be able to back down, walk down the gangway, step into the boat, so forth and so on. And we do have a place to still do that down there, but it slows the whole process down, people get aggravated, we get backups and things like that, so. Yeah, I mean, I think it's incumbent on people to stay in their comfort zone and their skill level when they're launching boats. I mean, we've seen no matter how nice the docks are, some of that's a little scary sometimes anyhow. But whatever we can do to try to improve that, I'd just like to see staff try to stay on that, see if we can find a temporary solution.
Blue barrels and some plywood.
Yeah, right? What else you got? Anything else? All right, good. All right, moving on to item sixteen, it's a Parks and Recreation theme, how about Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Report? Bobby Ball, good to see you.
Five O with the Parks and Rec Board. We had our meeting tonight, obviously you guys have had a lot of Parks and Rec talks, so I'll try to make it quick and not repeat a lot. So, we didn't meet last quarter, so we had a lot to talk about and really the focus of tonight. Well, first I want to mention, we had a lack of quorum last meeting, which is because we were lacking two members and now we have two members and I think they're both in the audience tonight. So, thank you Jeff and Brian for joining us. We did get a quantum volleyball, is going to join us for, be another partner with the city, like some of our other groups, like Pop Warner and soccer and baseball. And so we heard from them, Jordan and Tricia, husband and wife combo, they're working on developing it here in Port Orange and help fill the gap that was left by our last volleyball group. And they're super excited, they are Port Orange residents, they are, you know, been here before. Jordan was with Pop Warner Board, so he's familiar with the programs. It's just nice to have a little give back to the community, so good to have them. We approved or recommended approval, so hopefully that'll come before you guys at some point. We got a bond update from Sue, lots of good projects that have already started. Willa Run, as you mentioned, had the neighborhood meeting, so we'll have a plan to show pretty soon. Silver Sands Land Swap, you guys are familiar with as well, so that'll turn into a couple soccer fields. The Train Depot Park, that's going forward and maybe some additional land being brought in and a couple, another train piece and just all kinds of cool stuff there. And then White Place is also starting, is probably going to do something similar to the Willa Run Park as far as neighborhood input and whatnot. And then we heard from Jennifer on some of the programs. And baseball's ended, volleyball's started, good numbers above what their expectations were. Of course, the mayor's golf tournament was not too long ago and we had met our goal of ten thousand. And I guess there's some other ongoing capital approvals projects which you're familiar with. Playground is starting here at City Center, the soccer fields are going to go out the bid. All kinds of stuff, so with that, I'll be quick, unless you've got any questions.
Your second place trophy's in the back room, back there Bobby?
I already got it, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Ben delivered.
Man, that's hard. Train Depot project is really shaping up nice, if you haven't had a chance to go down and see that. It's pretty impressive and they've got a great little social media page where they showed how they literally got these, one of the, one of the caboose is, I believe, eighty years old.
Oh yeah.
And they brought that thing in on a...
It was great.
Yeah, it was amazing, on a flatbed semi and cut that thing off that thing onto the tracks and the, I mean, it's amazing. And then I think the following weekend, they brought in the railcar, which I think is seventy-five years old. So the history and how that thing's shaping up and how they're laying it out is really, really neat. That that's going to be a permanent part of our city, so pretty cool history there. And if you get a chance to talk to any of those people, especially when you're down there, and they've got some really cool stories and history about just all of that stuff. Anything that has to do with the railway that passing through the city of Port Orange and in Volusia County, it's pretty neat actually. So, anything else for us?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you Bobby.
Item seventeen, first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-seventeen, how about it, Mr. City Attorney?
An ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida amending the Land Development Code, Chapter sixteen, relating to local government regulation of home-based businesses to ensure consistency and compliance with recently adopted state legislation amending section five-five-nine-nine-five-five Florida statutes limiting local government regulation of home-based businesses. Providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the item to be on the floor, welcome.
Tim Berman, Community Development. About two or three years ago, Florida statute of state passed the basically ordinance here that we're kind of adopting here, basically on home-based businesses. It required all local governments and counties to use the same unified requirements when applying to home-based businesses. Once that one was adopted, the city did use that when we issued home-based businesses the past two or three years. However, we did not codify in our code because we want to make sure that it's stuck and there was no changes there. It's gone on a number of years, there's been no changes, so we are adopting those regulations into our code, removing our old language, so there's no confusion, moving forward with it. So, staff is recommending approval of the code amendment.
Any questions?
Sounds like just basic housekeeping, we're just going to put on the books what we've been, our policy internally anyway, so. All right, no questions.
Any questions?
I mean, it does differ from, it differs from our code somewhat and it's less stringent than our code.
The, kind of the only one that basically there with our code had more restrictions on the number of use, type of uses there. This does not, it still allows us to monitor the number of cars that can park in front of there, the screening of the equipment. It does allow for two additional employees from outside to come to the house then, but does have those regulations that we still, in terms of the aesthetics of the neighborhood, still monitor those then.
Does it affect our code enforcement department or how?
Does not affect the code enforcement in terms of, in terms of noise ordinance. If they're basically making noise above the ordinance allowed for residential, code can use our current codes on that then. So, does not affect in terms of code enforcement, it just actually, being in our code just eliminates confusion. When you look at the code, it says one thing and then we're forcing something else then. So I think it almost helps in terms of code enforcement going forward then.
But it is less lenient.
There is less requirements in terms of the uses and the number of employees that can be at that location.
There's nothing we can do about it. This is, this is called control from another area.
Yeah, getting in line.
It's because other cities, not us, come up with rules for home businesses and so Tallahassee says you're not going to do this to our local business owners across the state of Florida and they're going to tell you how you're going to run your city.
Thanks Tim. Any public comment on item seventeen? Seeing none, back to council. Last bite of the apple, court can call the roll.
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Gufford?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grubbs?
Yes.
Mayor Stilner?
Yes, five O. Item eighteen, first reading of ordinance number twenty-two-five-seventeen.
An ordinance of the city of Port Orange, Volusia County, Florida, amending the Land Development Code, Chapter twenty, relating to additional incentives related to permanent fees and mitigation for wetlands, trees and gopher tortoises for targeted businesses. Providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and effective date.
Move to approve ordinance number twenty-two-five-seventeen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item eighteen on the floor.
Tim Berman, Community Development. Over the past several years, the staff and the council has basically tried to make more efforts to improve the incentives that we can offer in terms of redevelopment in our Eastport CRA, Town Center CRA and along with the east side of Port Orange there. One thing that we started looking at in terms of the options available was, and the incentive there is that if someone wanted to ask for fees to be reduced related to state or federal agencies or mitigation payments or permit fees there, our code did not allow us to offer that as an option for developers to come and ask council for those assistance there then. So, what this does is it allows that option to be put into the code. They still are required, if they are going to ask for it, to provide an economic incentive agreement, which comes before the council for approval. So this is more or less just putting the option into the code. The ultimate approval of this option would come back as a separate agreement for a targeted business to council on its own agenda item then. So staff is recommending approval of this item.
Lance, we'll start with you, anything?
I'm not going to lie Tim, this is confusing to me. And so, so do you feel this is something that's necessary in Eastport as an example? I mean, aren't we, aren't we close to being done in Eastport?
No, we have seven, eight lots that are basically, that are in development in Eastport and four of them have basically been kind of in the holding stage for development for the past four years then. So, they're seeing something that we need to get them over the hurdle.
But I mean, this is something that we've imposed on everybody beforehand, before us, you know, beforehand and now to try and get the end, we're going to give away gopher turtles or we're going to give away trees or...
Basically, I mean, we've, again, basically in Eastport, one of the targeted businesses, also two, that is in our CRA, we do have funds that are now available to use for economic incentives. So that's basically one of the reasons why we're putting that, prior to that, we did not, there. So this is kind of something that, you know, over the course of time, was not available there. But based off the new funds that we have available in the TIF for Eastport CRA being paid off, this is an option that we can use. And again, we want to try to get those lots built and developed. Also too, in Eastport, there could be redevelopment property then, on existing properties, which this could be basically utilized for then. So, it's again, just one more tool to put in the toolbox on there then. And we just want to give that option, whether it's used or not, it may not be, but we just don't want to be able to tell someone no.
I think one of the challenges, we had, these CRAs are sunsetting in twenty thirty-six and unless the county changes tremendously, they're not going to get extended. So we got very limited window to get this stuff done. So, I know we hadn't done it in the past, but I think the lesson was whatever we were doing in the past wasn't working because they're still sitting there undeveloped. So trying to come up with a couple of other ideas to get somebody going down there is going to help because we got two CRAs, one of which still has debt, that are about to run out of being a CRA. So this was just an effort to see maybe these three things or two things will help push it over the, over the line. But that was part of, just the evolution of, okay, we tried this, it didn't get people to build there. But Ridgewood's another good example, we've probably tried fifty different ways to get people to go redevelop Ridgewood. We're fighting the market, but we have all kinds of different incentives. But every time we try something and it doesn't work, we'll keep plugging along till we can get it right.
Okay, all right, good, I can appreciate that, thank you.
This is fantastic that this is on our agenda tonight because I had a conversation today with a developer of a lot in Eastport, and it's an issue with many gopher turtles and the cost of it. So it was, it's ironic that we're having this conversation tonight and at the end of the day, if we make it, hold on, it's not like we're making it easier for people to do something on a vacant lot that's not generating any revenue for us other than the taxes the person who owns the lot is paying. But when they put in a, you know, they improve that land and the value of that property goes up, the money starts rolling into us and that's, we've got that land there to develop. So any way we could give someone an incentive to get it filled, it's been there for, I can't remember when we...
It's a really great location, it's a kind of a hidden location, so I think it takes the right kind of business, but it is a really good location that doesn't provide a lot of stress on our services or negative impacts.
And I know that this particular developer is doing it for himself, but he's also adding four maybe units for other businesses that can move into those spots because they're not available now. So I think it's a great opportunity for us to move Eastport along and anything else around that.
Sure.
While we have the time to do it, so, thank you.
Tracy?
I say, same, you know, what Sean is talking about, we had a conversation about a month ago with a developer out there and they toured the property and there's over thirty-one gopher tortoises on one single track. And when you start looking at that, you're in the tune of about eighty thousand dollars. That's a big bill for gopher tortoise. I'm not saying relocation isn't something that needs to be done, it definitely does and we need to protect them. But at the same time, when you're trying to sell it and develop it, that's another chunk of change that a developer has to look at. So, if we can help incentivize and for that to be moved properly so we can protect the gopher tortoise and this is one way to do it, it helps twofold, you know, helps the turtles.
For sure.
Helps us develop the land, but also helps us as a tax base be developed on property that's been sitting for thirty years. So, yeah.
Read?
No, I think you guys are right on with it, you know, it's, one thing about it, when we approve something like this, it's going to come before us, if anyone wants to develop, they're going to ask. But like I said, eighty thousand dollars to move some gopher tortoises is a lot of money. And, you know, anytime we can be pro-business, I think that's the right approach to take. I think this is good for, I think it's good for businesses that want to come in, it's good for the Eastport. And with the CRA, you know, ten years away from sunset, we want to try to get as much in there as possible before that happens, so.
It's probably got to be something that happens in the next couple of years.
This is almost a no-brainer for me, so.
Thanks Tim, appreciate it. Anybody from the public want to comment? All right, back to council, last bite? Nope?
And we just, on our consent agenda, just approved something in reference to gopher tortoises, so it all makes sense to me.
Court call the roll?
Councilman Foley?
Yes.
Councilman Gufford?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Grubbs?
Yes.
Mayor Stilner?
Yes, five O. On the regular agenda items, item nineteen, discussion of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six operating fund budgets, capital outlay and capital improvements program.
Tracy's getting the tech ready. All right, we're good. So this is set up the same way, very much like we did last year, same kind of format on the budget, going through it, focusing on the budget at fund level. Introductory slides, focus on the budget and then at the end, discussion on millage rate. Should council choose to do that tonight, you also have next Tuesday as a backup night. It's scheduled as a special meeting next Tuesday, five-thirty, should you prefer that as max millage or we can do it tonight. I'm going to talk through the slides, there's obviously some technical stuff. These are structured, if you have questions, just stop and ask them along the way. There are, the finance staff is here as well as all the other department heads. So questions that go at any level of depth, somebody will come up here and answer the question if it's something I don't have the answers for. So with that, I'll start going through the presentation, background slides that open it up. We've used these three key priorities for years, the big three, public safety, infrastructure and parks. That's been what's driven Port Orange's budget for a number of years, it still does. Hurricanes have kind of pushed that, infrastructure is really part of the emergency preparedness, but that's what we've been driven by. There's a different way to look at that, the keys in this budget are those stormwater projects and then there's a couple of parks things that are coming. One of the things that we have here is a pretty hefty investment in public safety this year with the additional officers and some fire trucks. We did not reduce any service levels, so what we've done is maintain the rest of the service levels and then I'll go through the budget and show you where we've requested funding to enhance the service levels. This quote was in last year, it's important, I think, that it shows proactive approach on behalf of council to invest in the infrastructure now so that it doesn't end up being an emergency where it tends to cost more money. I think we had one of the citizens get up, talk about that earlier. The idea of proactively fixing things in ahead of time and then the second half of that quote related to the people who provide it. So we are a service organization, we don't sell cheeseburgers, we don't sell cars or cellphones. We provide services to the community and those services are provided by our staff. Our staff does an outstanding job and the next slide gets into that and we did this last year too, but I think it's important when you come and ask for money to do things and it's the public's money that we're using to do this. People will want to know, well, what are you doing to maximize what you have? How do we know that we're getting good value for the money that you do have? And this is this year's list of things that have been done and it's split in half. Depending on which screen you're looking at, the top's green and blue, bottom's blue, different, looks different on some of the other screens depending on the quality of the resolution. But the top part are things where we have had... But the top part are things where we have had success in getting other revenues to support our project. So where we've been able to leverage funds from whether it's the state, the state government, the federal government. In some cases, it's bad guys we arrested, and they, we took their stuff, and that, that's helped pay for things. So there's a variety of things that we have used to do that. It was, it's been a particularly solid couple of years in leveraging local money. So the, the people of Port Orange aren't 100% paying for this. We're getting contributions from other places. The two plans open up the door for a lot of grant eligibility that's been talked about. We had a really solid year in state legislative appropriations as well. It's putting us in a really strong place for Transform 386 and Resilient Florida money going forward. So we will always continue to try to find ways to, to add other dollars to the Port Orange dollars to get things done. The bottom half is, is your staff basically saying, what can we do to, if, can we increase the service level? We don't need more money to do it. Is there some way to be more efficient at it? Is there some way to do what we're doing for less cost or do more for the same amount of cost? A lot of these things we have already talked about. We've talked a couple of times about the land swap related with us and the schools, putting the soccer fields closer here. So it's, it's easier to maintain, easier to manage. We've talked about the utilities department. They've given you a presentation on how we manage chemicals at the plant to save hundreds of thousands of dollars, and how many chemicals go in every year. We've also had a conversation about waste products in the treatment process, and how we are able to look at a pilot program that may save us from having to pay disposal costs for parts of the process. You end up with something useful like sand as a result. So these things have been going on. There's just two others I'd like to take some time to talk about here. One is the Tyler Asset Management Process. We have not had, in, in Port Orange's history, a, a real formalized asset management program. When we went over to Tyler, Tyler has this program. What really drove this for us is a number of, a couple of years back, and you remember these items. We have an air conditioner at the police station that had a long life, and it broke before it reached its long life. And, and that frustrated me tremendously because we're spending money in current years for something that we should have had about another decade before we needed to spend that money. We could have used that money on other things. But it was, it was not part of an asset management program where there were formal training. And so what we're gonna do, and it's gonna go all throughout the organization, but starting with the big stuff. So major air conditioners, roofs on buildings, generators, you, all, all of the things that cost tons of money, all the way through fleet, our heavy equipment. How often is it down? Why is it down? What can we do to maximize its uptime and being used? All the way down to smaller fleet, just how do we handle making sure that if you buy a truck that's supposed to last 10 years, it lasts 10 years? Sidewalk management, we've talked about the striping, paving of streets, fixing potholes, all these things can be managed. The more data you have, the more, the more we can come to you. When you say, well, how much money is it gonna take you to get all these neighborhoods striped in five years? I'll be able to give you that number going forward. And this will save, save us money because we won't take things that should last six or seven years and replace them at year three and four. So that's an important thing going forward. Multiple departments are a part of that. That's a real key thing. In addition to that, the other one I want to talk about is related to the hurricane debris monitoring site. And so in the past, every time the storm comes near, there's always, let's go get sandbags out. Well, in the past, it took us a day and a half or so to get fully set up with sandbags. We had, we had to go get sand from locations out in Sanford area, truck it in, set it up, go get the bags, pull the people over, staff it. It is really not a very efficient process. And, and the staff, to their credit, nobody told them to do this. They came in and went, we can do this. It's, we were wearing out public work staff, having people who drive trucks spend, for some reason, they always seem to come on a Sunday. So we'd spend all day Sunday preparing sandbags and getting ready. The hurricane would hit, and those same people who we made work 10, 12-hour days prior to the storm had to turn around and work another month and a half to two months, 12-hour days picking up debris. And to their credit, they came in and went, we can do better than this. Our debris management site out there is about, there was about three acres of usable land to store debris on. And last year, we, we let people come by and do their own drop-off. So as part of that learning process, they went, well, why can't we have them come by there and pick up sand under the same efficient process? So we now have a sand pile out there three times the size of any sand pile we've ever had before. And, and we have it, it's, we have basically stabilized the road. So you can come in, you'll come in from the south by the police station, come in, get in line. We have acquired two machines that will make 20 bags at a time. So we'll pre-make tons of bags the night before, have them ready, make them throughout the day. So you're not, you don't have this chaos of everybody getting out of their car and trying to shovel sand. The bags will be there. They come up, pick up, load them in the car, they move on, go up north and get out. So we'll be able to move people through at about a four-hour setup time doing it, get our people in and out. And we have, we don't have to send trucks now to go get sand. So the truck drivers will be able to rest, so they'll be capable of running heavy equipment when the time comes for, for post-storm. In addition to that, they did a ton of work in-house, all of our people in-house, and took that three-acre site and set it up for six acres. So we have, last year, we were a little nervous with some haline debris on top of Milton that we were gonna run out of land to put all that debris. And then we'd end up having to pay money to somebody else to lease a site to do that. So they've doubled the size of the site to the point where we can split it if we end up with two haulers to speed up the process. So you put the two haulers there with the monitoring company in the middle, and then get both of them going at the same time and speed up the debris removal site. And then when the storm's done, the same people can come through there, and you can do citizen drop-off while we're doing truck drop-off on the same efficient route. So that was all done by staff to, to save staff time and save taxpayer money and be more efficient, provide better service to the customers, completely on their own. Wasn't something I told them to do. They came in and said, we don't like the way we're doing it. We can do a better job. So those are the kind of things that the people work here are doing to, with the money that they're already given, to, to make sure that it's not being wasted. It's a good value and it's good use, and we have, we have a lot of people that work like that here.
Wait, I just, just a quick comment on the, on the citizen drop-off stuff. And that, that's an idea that was way late in coming to the game, but man, when it did, I mean, a lot of people want to do that. And, and they are, they don't, they understand that when you have these natural disasters, things take time. And a lot of the neighborhoods that, that are fortunate, who don't get impacted tremendously, they're okay with taking five, six, seven bags of yard debris and hauling it down there and just, we just gotta give them that place. So kudos to, to staff for, for doing that. And I know Waste Pro provided some resources on site to accommodate that and be able to do that. And I think that is a really good thing to make sure we keep in the, in the books. Hopefully, we never ever have to do it again. But if we do, certainly I think that, that, those are helpful.
So, leading from that into the actual budget, so this is an overview, a broad overview. The total budget's 222, general funds at 60, around 63. The, the general fund is relatively close to what it was last year. So that's the part of the budget that's funded mostly through property taxes. The total budget, the largest part of our budget is actually enterprise fund, and I'll show you that. There's a, there's a larger increase there, but it's driven by the capital projects and predominantly funded by outside sources to support us. There's some other information in there. The, the, where we have balanced this budget at the draft level for tonight is, is one of the lowest percentages over rollback we've seen in a number of years, certainly the lowest in the last five to six years. So this, this is hard to see on the monitor. It's easier to read off of your piece of paper. And I think the bigger screens are easier to see for the audience than the, the higher-resolution, smaller screens. So these are our key funds. So this is the six major funds and some smaller ones. And, and the funds are structured. It's, it's interesting, I think, when people see that the general fund itself is not as large as the enterprise funds are. The, the point of this is just a broader overview. Down at the bottom is where I listed the enhancements. So the enhancements to the general fund are principally staff. The police officers that we talked about, we have the grant that we've applied for to cover the first couple of years of those. So that's in, that's shown in there. As in watching the parks projects coming along later in the year, the parks people, they'd be allowed to hire a few people to be ready for the parks projects coming forward. So those are the enhancements to the general fund. And the enterprise funds, which is mostly the, the utilities department with water and sewer, we're adding a crew that we've looked at from way back before COVID. But the rules for maintaining fire hydrants have, have gone up. There's a much more stringent process for fire hydrant maintenance. Really, it shouldn't be a rule needed because it's really important. If you live anywhere, when, if something catches on fire, you want to be able, the fire department be able to hook up to that hydrant and put your fire out. So one of the things this crew will do is focus on 3,300 fire hydrants and making sure that we meet all the requirements of that, plus the valves near it. They, all of them are part of that field crew that works out there maintaining the distribution systems, whether it's water going in and sewage coming out, and the fire hydrants, they all work together. But a few years back, when they were originally considering these teams, the, we had a lot of vacancies. And with, with council support and the wages coming up and the union agreements that we've had, we've been able to fill all the vacancies in the field crews. And with them fully filled, they still are, same thing with the police. When, when you don't have vacancies, it's hard to ask for new positions when we're all full, and you realize you still need to provide better service. That's when you see the request. In the utilities, even with this requested enhancement, the operating cost actually went down because it's such a huge fund with other areas where there are lower costs. If, what you, what's really the notable thing on this slide is if you look at the capital numbers, you see how those are, those are where your big changes are. So you've got 13 million and 11 million. You've got, you've got fairly large changes in capital. And, and that's, when we get to slide 18, that's where the breakdown is gonna show you why those changes are there. But this, this is the broad overview by fund. This is the funds with what's underneath them. We also have this in a pie chart format. Last year, everybody preferred looking at it in pie chart, but I've got it here so you can see what makes up the parts of it. And if you want to go back to this slide at some point, we can. It really kind of just shows you water, and look how big water and sewer. Water and sewer is bigger than the general fund. That, that, that's how large our enterprise is providing this utility to, to various people in the region. These are the smaller ones on, on this page. So going into the pie chart section of this, the, the, we do this every year to show you the, the general fund. Where does the money come from that drives the general fund? The vast proportion of it comes from the property taxes. That's the big part of that. The intergovernmental, the intergovernmental resources also. There's an explanation down in the corner as to what those are. The sales taxes is a decent part of that as well. We really had thought this year we were gonna collect less in those other revenues. We had been told most of the year that the state was collecting at lower levels. It apparently was possible that the tariff caused people to spend more money. And so we ended up getting a better, more positive revenue stream out of this than we thought because people apparently went and bought more things than they were buying earlier in the year. So that number's a little higher. It's helping us work with the negotiations with the, with our labor unions going forward. So the extra revenue has been positive to help us with them. This is how the property tax comes to us, similar ratio to what we've seen in the past. We always have about two-thirds of it coming from the residential. We, we do have a reasonably solid commercial tax base. Over 20% is good. There, there are cities that have a ton of industry and major amounts of jobs that can get 30 and 40%. But, but this, for the suburban-type city that we are, that's, that's fair. We have some fairly large commercial players here. Bylight, US Foods, Target, Walmart, BJ's, LA Fitness, Pavilions. We, we have a decent, because we're one of the regional leads in the area, particularly around the interstate. So that really helps quite a bit with, with that because we have a tremendous amount of homesteaded properties in the residential side and a lot of long-term residents.
I actually have a question, because I'm just looking at this slide here. How, how can a commercial property be homesteaded?
Commercial's not.
Okay, I see where...
Those are exempt. I think it's covered and exempt, so some of them may be churches. I think it's probably what that is.
Okay, all right, there, yeah.
We just didn't change the word to show that.
Yeah, all right, that's, I saw, I'm like, wait a minute.
Somebody's sharp here.
Yep, there you go. Thank you.
Paying attention, aren't you?
Details, my friend, details.
And so this is how the general fund gets spent by category. So we start by showing this. This is one of the things we do as part of the, the budgeting process, as well as when you look at audit at the end of the year. But personnel is the largest cost out of the general fund. And you can see the other things that are in there. The, the contract services is really also personnel. It's us paying other people. So we pay some people to mow things. We, we pay people to do services. So those are your, that's your cost of people to do work, the dominant expense. And then this is when you look at it by department. And, and this pie ratio is, is fairly similar to what it's been for the last several years. It's dominated by public safety. This year, the piece of the pie that is police is a little bit bigger because of the additional officers going in there, parks being the third. So back to that first slide, when you look at the budget drivers and what's the key to our budget, the big three, the, the infrastructure you saw in the enterprise funds, and then the two, parks and public safety. So those are the big three. The big three are where we put the money. If you're gonna have a strategy, you usually put most of your money in your strategic priorities, and that's what we do. We put it into public safety, parks, and infrastructure. These are the enterprises dominated by water and sewer. We said before, this, this ratio hasn't really changed. The water sewer is so large that even small changes to it with, with staffing, and you can see that number was actually fairly small. That's, that, that crew doesn't cost a, a ton to, to operate. So that's their breakdown. The special revenues are even smaller. The building department, so that's the building inspectors. It, it's interesting. So in this pie chart, to show you how small the special revenues are, the building fund is about $3 million, which is the same size as the golf course. On this slide, that $3 million is over half of our special revenue. The golf course is only 3% of the total in the enterprises. So this, this, the scale of the difference between the enterprises, which are fee-driven parts of the budget, and, and this is also fee-driven, but it's got a little different rules to how it works. The, the notable thing on here are the two CRAs that we've, as we talked about Eastport earlier. Eastport is now, it's debt, it's paid its debt. So probably right before I got here originally, like, by two, early 2000s, we went in and extended the road to the south and built a pond system to support the development in there. So the debt's now been paid. So all the TIF revenue that's being generated is now going into a TIF savings that we can then use to do infrastructure improvements in the area, use it for incentives as well, as well. But it's, it's now operating the way CRAs are supposed to operate, where the, the, the additional growth and tax revenue is paying for its improvements in that area. The town center, the big change there is while we still have debt, and the, the payment schedule is scheduled to not be paid off till the, the CRA sunsets, it is now low enough that, and, and with new developments coming up in the CRA, and there have been four or five pretty nice developments down there, it's now generating enough revenue to at least pay the debt down every year. So we used to generate, we used to send 250 to 400,000 dollars a year out of the general fund just to pay those loans. Now it's paying its own loans. So it, it'll take till 2036 to pay them off, but there's, that's a pretty good positive improvement out of that CRA to see us. And that's without Riverwalk down there. That's on its own with those smaller projects. So we talked about capital in great detail back at June, so I won't go through the full hour-long presentation on that. But this is it summarized broadly. Again, you always see the dominance of the, the utility, the water sewer in there. So this is the slide I wanted to draw attention to, the, the capital project. So when we were looking at the, the budget increases on the, the first slide, so you see these dramatic, you know, $20 million increases in your budget. And people are like, how are you spending that much more money? So if you look at this list of the top eight on this list, six of those eight items, we have substantial outside revenue for. So the year came in that we, these projects are now ready to be funded. We move them into the budget, those dollars show up. But you're not increasing your spending of the public's tax dollars by $20 million. You are simply allocating money that we got from the legislature, or that we got, the, the utilities project on the top, the 15 million, is a 100% forgivable loan. So of this, the six of the eight on the top that are the dominant, this is why your budget changes. Only two that we're having to pay for is the second phase of the, the sewer plant upgrade, which is the $6 million, and the city center ball field. And that's the project back here where we're gonna lift and, and seal it off. So that one, we tried hard in Tallahassee. The, the parks improvements like that just weren't what was getting legislative appropriations this year. But that, that's a pretty solid support from other people to do a lot of good work on infrastructure here. And then the projects below it are the smaller scale, which are probably more typical of what you'd see, you know, in any given year in Port Orange, these kind of improvements, whether they're to lift stations or to parks or things like that. So this is, this is really probably the key slide to the whole budget. This is driving what's changed the most part in here. And, and again, thanks to the legislature and all the people who helped us with the funding to, to not have that be all on our taxpayers. We get this question sometimes too with capital projects because they span multiple years, and they, they get funded in certain years, but they grow. Somebody will go, why, why isn't Cambridge on this list? You know, isn't that an important project? Cambridge was funded in a prior year. So we just put these on here to show you. These are existing funded capital from prior years. They're still there, and they're still moving forward, but they're not in the current year. So they don't show in year one of the budget. They're, they're just out there from the past. This is the stormwater slide. We had this in there in the June presentation, but we realized after some of the questions that we could do a better job in how we put it together. So we, we put the, the top five projects from the, the stormwater master plan are in here with how much they cost, what they estimate, where the money's coming from, what the breakdown is. So you can see where all the outside sources are coming from. Transform 386 through the county is gonna be very important, as Vice Mayor mentioned too. The resilient Florida dollars are critical to these projects. We've put some construction estimated times and design estimated timelines in there, subject to the grants being available. The benefit here is we, we just recently, Palmer bought the Allen Green Center from us, and we acquired some money from Irma, reimbursements from Irma last year. So we've, we've, that money's been set aside to hold. We still have a full quarter left in this fiscal year, but we do expect there will be some money that doesn't... some money that doesn't get spent that will roll over into the fund balance. Your fund balance is healthy. It is above your 25% minimum. It's closer to the 40% with this, what we think's coming in. That money would be held on to. 35 is what your cap is. So you want to be right around the 30. It's about 20 million, 25 million dollars. So you want to take the, what we're suggesting we do is anything that we rolled over into it, we hold on to for these projects as backup in the event one of the grants. It's possible we get Transform 386, but maybe we don't get the whole amount we asked for. So that money for now would be used as backup for these unless you'd like us to put it into something else. But it, because it's one-time only money, you don't use it for ongoing operating. You just have to either leave it there or pick a project that you want us to fund with it going forward. We don't know yet because we're not quite that far enough along. But this is, I think it was important for everybody to see those projects, when they start and how they're being paid for. Because there's been a couple of questions of what's the likelihood of the project actually getting underway? So Cambridge, which was on the other one and also shown here, is one FEMA reimbursement from starting in January, once we get the permit. So that's the first thing people will see construction on. I know that's, that is a critical area of our town to take care of, and that project's very important. And then we follow up with starting construction the next year on the Pepper Hill Madeline one, and then we get to Sleepy Hollow's design at the same time we start that. So those are the three largest. Portona's a little smaller scale in that area. And the powers purchases is really trying to focus on the area down there by the post office and the FPL and that whole area. And the other thing while we're doing this, the county is leading the basin studies for us. And so they're doing V-19 in Cambridge and Spruce Creek. And those projects could lead to additional funds through Transform 386 and other county sources. And I think there, because they're doing these, that these are regional projects and not Port Orange only. So there's definitely challenges beyond our borders for all of those projects. And so we look for those, when those projects come forward, to get funding beyond just us to do those as they come forward.
Wayne, the projects that get the Transform 386 funding, if we're fortunate for that, I know you had said that they theoretically kind of become county projects now, right? The county's going to oversee them through that process. Those projects then come off of our budget or how does that work? Is it just we show a transfer of funds?
We would transfer our funds to their project.
To them and then it comes out of our budget and it's off our books, so to speak? Or?
The counting was, we just give the money to the county.
Okay.
Scary.
All right. So this debt slide, so we had, we had experts come talk to us. We had our financial guidance people talk to us in November of last year. In April of this year, they came back again in May before we went out with the parks bond. So we have, we have talked about debt for hours and hours up here and how it works. I won't go into the detail unless you guys have questions on it. The main thing from all of that was that we are using it judiciously. It is not a weakness in how the government's run. It is being used purposely and effectively to get better value for money. Certain things are better, cheaper to do it that way. In other cases, it's a, it's a choice to have the people who benefit from whatever we're buying be part of paying for it throughout its life. As an evidence of us being good with and being good stewards of when we do use debt, as we went out to get the bonds for parks, we went through a Moody's process for bond rating and they upheld our AA2 rating as part of that by noting how well we handle our debt processes and how solid our finances were. So it's not a, it's not an issue that we just show this slide as part of the budget every year because you can see as it pays off going through the years. And it's also part of the overall tax bill that people pay, the separate geo-debt when it goes forward. So it's important to be transparent that it's out there. This is just future years. I won't spend a lot of time on it, but it's better to tell you ahead of time than surprise you at the end of the year. There's, there's still more police officers. We are, we're, you know, we're not the highest in staffing for the crime rates in the population. There's that conversation with the county of having a second ambulance at some point in time. And the estimate to finish by the time all the parks projects get done is 10 more employees to run all those parks by the time that they're done. The sewer plant, we're showing it in phases, but that's the total cost of it when we do that major upgrade. So a lot of that will be grant fund eligible from the similar sources to where we got the refundable loan from. So we expect not to have to pay that much money. That's just what it will take to get there. And then City Hall, which when we talked about that, it was before the hurricane, but it, the building, the walls are stable. It's not going to fall down. But the plumbing, the roof, the electric, the energy efficiency of it, the technology, we've got this wonderful 1980s VHS technology in the council chambers. It is not a very efficient building. We can, we will need to at some point in the near future do something different than this building. It is willfully slowed down because the priority is making sure that we have our infrastructure taken care of and take care of people related to stormwater and hurricanes before we build a government building. At some point in time though, it's not a good steward to keep working in a building that's costing more money than it would be to switch it out. But right now, that's not the right thing to do. So it's, it's there, be aware of it, but it's not, right now, we have other things people I think expect of us than building a city hall.
The ambulance thing, I tell you, it's still, it is such a hard thing to use too. Yesterday afternoon, I, our department was responding and handling a medical call and the ambulance that was on scene in our city was from Edgewater. And it just, it just, every time I see it, I'm just like, man, oh, man. You know, I mean, it's great. Ours has proven to be very efficient and effective and have been a true plus 100% for our city, but it's still just crazy to see that sometimes, that the way that the ambulances are distributed around the county, that those resources pulling an Edgewater ambulance all the way out of, you know, Edgewater to come to.
And ours used to spend some quality time all the way up in Ormond and that. We probably at some point in the future have the chief, because he loves talking in public, come up and talk about it. But he's, he's done a really good job of, of making sure that we get the best deal we can have. And they have worked on trying to make sure that our ambulance doesn't get sent for non-emergency purposes outside of our jurisdiction, that we get more of the collection rate back. I think they've done a really good job. The division chief that we have put in there has done a really good job of making sure how we do the inventory, how we make sure that we have all the right equipment in there. The IV program that we did where it's a partnership with Halifax was something that came out of that new chief. So at some point, it's probably worth a presentation to council on how we're helping protect our citizens through what we do with our medical services.
I think it's a great idea. Let's not, if the chief's okay with it, let's not do it tonight.
So if, I don't know if there are any questions on the budget in general before we go into the millage slide?
Any questions about the general budget?
Do we have an actual number as to how much money we have in general fund balance? Do we have?
You do. What is the number right now?
Like what is?
Why don't you talk about the unreserved fund balance?
Yeah, fund balance. What do we have right now?
Approximately 4.1 and then there's the Allen Green proceeds.
The overall, the 20 million that we keep, that number?
The excess of our, not 35.
Yeah. Four, it's 4 million over.
So we have 4 million right now in excess of the 35%.
Counting the Allen Green.
Which, which I think we've started to have a consensus up here that 35% may be a little arguably high. But that's, that's a different conversation for us to have amongst ourselves. But, okay, so.
That's definitely, that's definitely going to be a workshop conversation soon.
Yeah, it's going to have to be. I agree. Because, so we're 4.1 million above the 35% right now, not counting the proceeds from the Allen Green building.
That's correct.
Okay.
29 is low.
Thank you.
Just keeping in mind that those kind of dollars are one-time spending.
No, yeah, we can't use those.
That can't be used for recurring costs.
And actually, you, you did a great job when you're in a different seat explaining this from this dais, is that we don't want to use those dollars for recurring costs. You know, we've seen other administrations that neighbor us who have done that, and now they're having to play catch-up because they paid for recurring expenses with one-time money. But 4.1 million plus whatever we get from the sale of Allen Green Center is a lot of one-time money above 35%. That is a lot.
And we can have the list of capital projects total that you can, we can basically bring you a presentation and say of this, where would you want to allocate it if you choose to do that?
Yeah, and I think what we do is we get, we see how, we let Transform 386 play out, and then somewhere after that, it's time for a workshop and a strategy session and figure out what we want to do.
Because we don't, and we should hopefully know before adoption, but we, we were hoping to know on that. We don't know that they will give us everything. We, we had, probably had some hints that they may not give us everything we've asked for. So I don't, the totals that we were showing might be lower, which may require subsidy.
But do we have any idea at all what the Allen Green Center might sell for?
It already has, 4.1.
That was, that is the, so it's from that.
No, that, that's addition to.
So and so then there's a total of 8.2?
Correct.
Thank you. All right.
All right, so this one you've seen before is a conversation about the over rollback numbers. The reason we're showing this is just it shows the trend, that the, the way we've balanced, this budget's balanced with a millage at 5.03 and the decimals. You can see the downward trend. So after the spike in '24, and that was the year where we had the police officer raises, and it was the first time we allocated 3.5 million from the last time we got major amounts of revenue from the state. So that was when we had the money for the river crossing, the Fort Main River Crossing, and the money for Commonwealth. It was also the same year. The year before, we had taken out vacancies. We had so many vacancies, we didn't budget for it. And then the, the staffing went back because of the assistance to the police department, and we had to put all that back in. So after that spike, you've been doing less and less and less. So this becomes the lowest percent over rollback to balance the budget and the less total dollars over rollback to balance the budget. So just, this was more relative to the thing, the issue is because we are, we're reaching build-out, and we've talked about this before. When I got hired, when I was standing out there doing the interview, the council was saying, you know, we're switching from a community of growth to a community of build-out. And it, there may be redevelopment, but we're just filling in small gaps now. I moved here in 2007. We have had less than 10,000 people added to our population in almost 18 years since then. It's 500 people a year is virtually no growth. It is really slow, really flat. What people are seeing, I think, is the infill. So they'll see a self-storage facility or a car wash that drops in. But as far as population, which is driving the need for fire and schools and really expensive infrastructure, we haven't been seeing a lot of growth. Well, you can live a city off of growth if you're doing well. That's how you pay for inflation and keep up. When you don't have growth, you got to find other ways, which is really nice that our staff's out there trying to do that by finding other funding sources and finding better ways to do stuff. But we're tightening it up. You can see the tightening from this chart. And this is the, this is this year, it's not, it's not the proposed 26 budgets because we don't have that numbers from everybody. But at the balance rate of the 5.03, you don't change your position on this chart. Pearson's the one closest to us. It would take a decent cut from them to get to us. I don't think any of the 5 eights are going to cut enough to, we may end up in the exact same spot at that millage rate. I just put this in here, I don't even know if this is true, but everybody's seen the shrinkflation stuff all over the internet. And businesses sometime get to have their response is what do you do when the world gets tougher? And what happens when you quit having growth? And, and they can sell you less for more, you know, which is what that example shows. In our case, that's not something the government gets to do. We get to do more for less, the exact opposite of that. So we even have a couple of local restaurants here where we went in, and one person's very familiar with the beer cheese soup, where you used to be able to take the spoon and lay it across the top and it would barely, it would almost fall into the bowl. And since COVID, the spoon hangs out over the side of the bowl and they, they charge more money for it for a smaller amount. And that, so I know it's happening. You've seen it happen in buy a bag of potato chips and, or get, get a thing of fries and now there's like six fries in the bag instead of 20. That's what people do to make profit in that world. We're not in a profit business. We're in the service business for our people. So it's not really something that our public expects us to do is to shrink the size of the services and charge them more money for it. So our challenge is to figure out how to keep providing them the stuff they want without getting the price too high. So that, that gets us to the key, the key slide here. This is the millage scenarios. This is something format we use every year. The upper orange bar is how we have the draft budget balanced. The lower orange bar is the current millage rate, and then the bottom is the rollback rate. So, and then the dollar amounts are in here. And that one column on the far side is the average increase that would be to a, it's a typical house that is assessed at 250,000, 230, I think it is, 230,000 with a $50,000.
Homestead.
Yeah. So that, that property, it's, where the millage is based, it's whatever that number is, it's about $11 over current right now. So what we, if we left the millage where it is or we moved it up, you'd be spending about 11 more dollars for a typical house in Port Orange. So it's a relatively small amount to go to that 5.03. And like I said, it's, it's small because it's only a little over like 5% above rollback right now. So at this point, we just leave it up to council. You guys have a conversation and tell us what millage you want. Remember, it's max millage. You can always lower it. It's really difficult. You can go up, but it's really difficult. I don't know, I've ever seen any city in this area ever try to go higher. So whatever you set for max, three of the last five years, we've actually lowered it since you set the max. We have from now until September when we actually vote on the budget. So anything, we haven't provided, any questions you have, any other information you want, we've got a solid month and a half to get you where you want to go before we vote on it. Again, we do have to turn in a max millage by the end of the month so that it can go in the trim notices that all the citizens get. But you can always go lower than that or keep it the way it is. So at this point, I'll let council, if you have any questions, we're happy to listen to the conversation on what millage.
Do we need to close item 19 and move to item 20 for this, rest of this discussion?
Yes, it's set up for that.
Unless anyone has any questions.
If you have any questions where we're at right now?
I guess I have one more question, just on the capital projects, specifically the two that we're paying for. So we have water reclaimation safety and we have the city center ball field rehab. How much of the 3 million is expected for us to pay in year one? Is that 100% in the, and where is that money coming from? Is it coming from the millage and the general fund?
It is 100% general fund for that one.
So, so $3 million.
It'll be allocated in year one. We may not, the project may span that year and it may, they may bill us beyond that year, but it will be allocated in that year one.
Okay.
It's being designed now, so that's the construction cost.
Wayne, I know we talked about this earlier, and I just want to re-clarify. Last year, when we got to this point, we were looking at tax base as far as income coming in from the state for gas tax and things of that nature. We've got that all accrued into the numbers now?
You have them all now. So for, for some reason in years past, they, they used to, they used to do this early in July. And then the last three or four years, I think the COVID era, they were pushing it to the last possible. This year, they beat the timelines and got them into us.
Okay, so we won't have anything outstanding then?
Nothing that would be notable to change the revenue stream.
I don't know if I have anything right now at this time. I just kind of, just kind of, you know, I've been looking at this for a while now and I don't really have anything right now.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
So yeah, this is the um so this is a this is a starting point for us as a council and and staff working on the budget. They've done the staff's done a lot of work, obviously, already. But the reality of it is, is that what we're charged with tonight is setting a max millage, which is the starting point. There is still a lot of work that gets done between now and in September before we will approve the final budget and all that stuff. We have to give them the starting point to work from and then work down from there. So we've got, you know, the fourth quarter left of this year. It is. It is good because the last few years, like Wayne was just commenting on, when we got to this point, we didn't even have all of the projected revenues in. And here we were sitting here trying to make this decision, hoping and assuming we knew what what the feel was. And so that's not a good position to be in. So it's a little bit of a better starting point that we have this year. So we'll close item 19 and move into item 20 for setting the max operating millage for the fiscal year 20, 25, 26. City attorney, is there anything you have to read on that or no?
No, that's the form. At some point, we'll have to comment.
Sure. All right. So Wayne, you just want to do you want to comment any further on what we're what we need to do for staff tonight? I mean, I feel I know we have next Tuesday set aside so that if council didn't want to set a max tonight, but I think we can get it done, guys, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I have all the information.
So I want to, yeah, I want to, you know, recognize the work that staff has done to get us hit tonight, and let's do our part and and get this done tonight. Any other comments, Wayne, you want to?
Nothing further until you have questions for us.
Okay. Lance, we'll start with you then. What's?
So how so how's this go? We just all start throwing out numbers?
Yeah, so we we gotta we gotta come up with a with a max millage. And so this page 27 here on the chart is kind of a good guide. If you have questions on this guide, then then the city manager and finance staff can kind of chime in. So we currently sit at 4.975. That is our current millage rate. Obviously, rollback would be 4.7657. Staff has done a draft budget to bring forward tonight. Like the city manager said, you know, they usually will come down from there anyhow, but they're sitting currently at 5.0325 with the draft budget that we have tonight, which would be about a 5.6% increase.
Mayor, do you want to take public comment now or wait until you have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yeah, let's let's we'll have a little discussion here first and most of the second, and then we'll have some public comment on it.
So so I am of the mindset, and again, I've put a lot of time into this, and I've met I've met with these guys on this a lot. And I don't see why we can't make it and continue to be at the 4.975. That's what I have.
Okay. Any additional comments about any of the budget stuff or?
No.
Okay. Sean?
So I've done my research with this, and, you know, this is going to be probably one of the tougher decisions we make because this is the most well, it's one of the most important decisions we make. And it's the funding of our city for our citizens. And it's probably the most my I mean, I don't know. I haven't had one person come to me and complain to me since I've been running for office and I got elected about taxes. They've they've all talked to me about the lack of services and the diminishing roads and striping and the lack of staff or issues with, you know, not enough space for parks and rec. Where we have a waiting list of of kids that want to participate. People love Port Orange. I've been a realtor for 30 years, and I chose to live in Port Orange. When I got to make that choice where I said, hey, I want to live in Port Orange, I moved to Port Orange and absolutely love it. And I asked people when they tell me they live in Port Orange, I said, what made you choose out of all the locations in East Volusia County? What made you choose Port Orange? And they pull off a 95 and they head east, and they're in awe of how beautiful it is. And all of that has come with a lot of discussions that I've been a part of as a as a guest in this room about why we wouldn't why we should not build where BJ's is now that I get my gas almost every single week, where I shop there, why we should leave it the way it is. And no one's complaining about that. They're just in awe of how beautiful Dunlop is. When we pull off the interstate, you guys have done such a fantastic job of of building something that attracts people to the city. I get that all the time. That's the number one thing they say is when they pull off a 95. And you don't get that everywhere when you pull off a 95 in Florida. But all of this that we've done costs money to maintain. And people want it maintained. And when a business goes and builds a building, if they don't collect enough money, they can't maintain it. And it shows real quickly in the quality of their food and the quality of their employees. Everything starts to decline. The next thing you know, they're out of business. Now, we're not a business that's going to go out of business, but we can't go backwards when it comes to funding the most critical aspects of strengthening our community with safety, with parks and rec, quality of life, with infrastructure that I've sat in this room last year when it was full standing room only of people complaining about flooding. And that and I understand why it flooded. It wasn't because of our failures. It was because of Mother Nature overtook us. It didn't happen today. It rained like crazy today for hours. And I drove through that same neighborhood in the middle of the day when I left this my meeting here today, my meeting here today with city manager, I drove through that neighborhood. It wasn't flooded. Now, there was puddling between houses, and if it would have continued, there would have probably been some issues. But we're working on addressing that because we have now resources that we are raising, and we got to continue to do it. And I don't I watch this city. I wouldn't say not raise taxes because you can see that we have raised taxes, and that's basically what we're we decide. Do we want to increase our funding to provide the services that are most important to the people? Will it create a better place for the people that are growing families in this area if we can properly fund the services that we need? You had mentioned something, Reed, about where a city used resources from a sale of something and then found themselves back in a corner. Which city was that? Was it a city that already charges higher millage rates?
Because most of them do. I'm actually not referring to the city. I'm referring to actually during the COVID years, the Volusia County School Board took some one-time funding and hired new teachers and created new programs. And now they're having to eliminate those teachers and eliminate those programs because they cannot raise they can't raise enough funding to continue them. And so that's why you have to be extremely careful that you don't employ new police officers with general fund balance or sale of something because it will go away. And so you never want to purchase recurring items with one-time cost.
Got you.
Or recurring labor with one-time cost.
And my wife is retired educator from Volusia County, 31 years. And how frustrating is that when you're in leadership and don't have the funds to provide the services that our families want? It's very frustrating. I don't want to ever be in that position. I know we're a fiscally sound city. Our prior leaders have done a fantastic job. But things continue to go up. The need for fantastic engineers and city managers and fire chiefs and their staff and utilities continues the the demand for those quality people continue to rise and for us to remain competitive. We got to remain competitive by being able to do it financially. And sometimes that's going a little higher on our millage rate to generate those revenues. In five years, if we're in a better position because Riverwalk is out of the ground and people are occupying it and we're generating revenue through redevelopment, redevelopment comes when people see that we've invested in our city and they want to bring money to it. But if we go just getting along and we don't invest in our city, no one's going to want to invest their hard dollars in redevelopment because that's all we have. We're about built out. We were lucky to acquire the 56 acres or so in our last meeting to, you know, see some housing go there, generate some revenues. We got Woodhaven, you know, that's going to generate some revenues. Then where do we go? We don't go anywhere except for redevelopment. And where I'm from, that's what's generating a great economy right now in Fort Lauderdale is redevelopment east now instead of because they can't go any further west. And, you know, yeah, they all went out there. Now they want to live east. And it's amazing what's going on in the investment. But they those cities have done some fabulous things to create incentives to make people want to be there. And how are we going to do that in the future, you know, upgrading our infrastructure? We just spent a lot of time and effort. In Tallahassee, we got lucky. We really got lucky. We have a demand from our citizens to take care of our infrastructure, and we got lucky that we had the money and were able to get some money to match and had the experts to do that. I want us to continue asking our citizens to continue to invest in our city. I'm willing, and I do the average, you know, when you take this, if we went up to, and I'll make a motion eventually, that we we give our staff, we give our city an opportunity to be successful. That's, I think, what the citizens want. And it's not rollback. And it's not, I mean, they're very generous. We we're going to be very competitive, I think, with our safety with our negotiations this year. But we got to give our staff the tools to be one of the best cities in East Volusia County, Central Florida, to get people to invest here. It has to be our strategy really to give our city staff the tools they need and its finances. It always comes down to money. Now, Robin is our assistant city manager. Since I've gotten elected, I've been harassing her about these ugly flamingo signs on Taylor Road because everybody makes a left-hand turn and goes east, and they love it. You make a right-hand turn and go west, and you see some corny things, light poles without lights on them. And I said, we got to do something about that. It costs money, Sean. You know, is it in our budget? Well, if it costs money, how are we going to have businesses invest out there if we're not taking care of that those things because of money? So I think our citizens have shared with us through the Parks and Bond vote, the Parks and Rec Bond vote, that they are willing to invest in our community. It was several years ago, they invested in public safety for us to get a police station out there on Clyde Morris. I think that they're entrusting us to make the right decisions, which are hard. And we can always lower rates if we get in a better position. We have several cities around us that are debt-free but have no money to do anything. None. So I'm not worried about the debt. We're going to take care of that. And redevelopment will take care of that if we make the investment. So I don't want to repeat myself. My wife is probably going, oh, my God, you said the same thing 10 times. But I'm passionate about this, and I'm passionate about Port Orange. I want to make sure it heads in the right direction. We need the funds to do it. So right now, that's all I've got to say.
You got a number that you're thinking?
I'm looking at the the 5.075, which, when I did the math, it's $2.60 a day, I think, for the average homeowner. That's a huge investment into our community to give the tools to our staff.
Reed? Jump in there.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So sorry, my mic was off. I appreciate what Sean's saying here. I got to come right out of the gate and say, I don't see a reason for us to go any higher than what staff says they need, knowing that you've already been in shade meetings and negotiations and that they're saying they can get things done at that number. So I don't see why we push any higher than that. I will say that staff has rewarded our confidence the last four or five years by giving them what they asked for at this max millage meeting and then bringing us a lower number by finding something coming along the line down the road, something that there was more money somewhere in one of the buckets or whatever it may be. So it's kind of a balance here. This is not where it's not where the final millage gets set. This is where we kind of put the roof on the house, right? And so I'm a little more lenient at this meeting than I am in the others. With that being said, and Wayne, I'm going to let you, if you want to weigh in a little bit here, I want to make sure I understand this. I'm struggling with a 503, which is 5 and a half percent, 5.6% above rollback. If we already have 35% in our in our general fund and our savings account, if you will, and we supposedly have another 8.2 million on top of that 35%, I'm having a hard time understanding why we can't at least stay at the same rate. And I want to make sure I got the correct information when we were just doing this, you know, presentation because that's that's weighing on me heavily. We're starting to have if that fund starts to get too large, even with the flooding projects and everything else that we're trying to accomplish, which are very, very important. It's obviously the most important topic amongst our residents and their biggest concern. But if we're at 8.2 million above the 35%, I can in good conscience have a millage rate up here that's 5.6% of a rollback.
So that was not what I understood, and the staff had a conversation and clarified, we don't have 4 million extra over and above. That was what we use to pay for the general fund projects that are here. So that's what is accounting for that. It will slide it back down to the top. It's still the top end of the number. You know, so you can go 17, I think it's 17 or 18 million dollars is your 25%. So it's it's in the 20s, but it's not 4 million plus 4 million. So we use that money to to pay for the general fund capital in the budget to keep it at 5.03. You do have Alan Green revenue and the other there. Again, it's your call, but we're not sure those transform 386 are going to come through at that level. And that may be necessary to complete some of these projects because they're they're big dollars. You saw that that chart.
Absolutely.
So that that money, that's what we were thinking would happen is that 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 Alan Green money and the and the Irma would sit there as a backup. And if in the event that we get all the grant money, and we know we do, we can come in and do something else with it. You can always adjust. You can adjust mid-year. We will hopefully, I don't know when the county's going to vote. I think they were supposed to. At least this, we would know the staff recommendations before you vote to adopt the budget. I think it's what we're pretty sure we'll have something from the staff going forward. In that case, we could adjust again, as Councilman Foley said, you can always, the max millage isn't something you're stuck with. So if we we get more information, we learn more, just like we do with incentives and anything else. We get better educated. We have more information. We can revise it.
Okay, yeah, because that's 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 extremely important to have is information. But, you know, having been feels like I've been here, it's been nothing but hurricanes. But having gone through that, we've never been in a position of jeopardy as far as our fund balance goes. And so but if we don't but not having 8 million or, you know, having 4 million over versus 8 million also changes that a lot. My initial thoughts right now, I'm still just not super comfortable going quite that high. I like a millage rate right now, max millage of a flat 5. That's where I'm at, which is 4.92% above rollback. I do think staff has done a really good job working from where they started and moving some of this around. But I still think we need to take more money out of that general fund balance to pay for some of the one-time capital and get this millage rate lower. And so that that would be my heart's desire and the way I'd like to see us start start moving.
Anything else?
That'll be all.
All right, Tracy, how about a discussion from you?
Okay. So looking at the millage rate as of right now, I think one of the things to point out, your two budget with the fundings and everything, 222 million dollars. When you go from a 4.975 where we were before, and you go to the 5.03 for max or what we're requesting and that being asked for, you got to understand that that's less than 1% of where we were as far as dollar amounts. It's actually 0.65 of a percent.
Wait, say that? I'm sorry.
Yes.
You lost me there.
Point 65.
Clarify that and talk about the two margins that you're talking about.
1%. You're going from 4.975 to 5.03.
You're talking about current millage?
Yeah.
Okay, not rollback.
Not rollback.
Okay, I understood. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
And when you look at that that dollar amount, and all of us know everything is going up. Cost of living, you know, they always do an average of 2%. We know it's been more than 2% this past year. So for staff to come back to us and put a request in for the 5.0325, I want to say thank you big time. It's it's less than 1% from cost of actual living. So you guys have done a phenomenal job. I have to resonate, Councilman Foley, on the fund balance and how that 4 million dollars and looking at that, that that's that is a concern. We we hold a lot of dollar amounts there. At the same time, we have a lot of projects coming on right now that that fund balance is going to get absorbed up as we move forward. We all know that we have $53 million in projects. Somehow, some way, we were hoping Resilient Florida pans out. We hope Transform 386 pans out. State gave us a crunch of money, 4 million dollars. It's just absolutely amazing. But we got two other entities that we're we're hedging on. So there's a lot to this as we go. I think council needs to keep in mind that this is this is the max that we're talking about right now. It's not what we hopefully have to set it for, but it's it's the max. So if we're underneath 1%, which is a whole sum of what they are requesting at 5.0325, that's $10.61 difference from where we were last year, not rollback, actual last year's monies that we did. So my request would be splitting the difference in there. I agree with Reed and us looking at the 5.0, and that's splitting between the two. And I think that will allow us to get to the monies and also look at what our general fund is as far as the fund balance.
Anything else?
That's it.
So my my thoughts are, and we'll go to public comment here in just a second. So having been through this. So having been through this several times up here, I can tell you that, you know, when the staff lays out a budget for the year, it assumes a lot of things. It assumes every position is full, stays full at all times, every operational cost runs at 100% at all times. It doesn't really happen like that. Even things that have to be purchased will have, will take time to come in, hires will take time to process through, you'll have retirements, you'll have people who decide to go find other occupations, all these different kinds of things. And thus is how a lot of times we end up with money carrying over from one year into the next, going into your fund balance, right? So just from a historical perspective, I will tell you guys, when I got on the council for the first time, our fund balance was over 50%. It was one of the highest in all of Volusia County. And at the time, we, one of the reasons it kind of got like that was, and it wasn't that anybody had done anything wrong, it was just that the council hadn't established a policy to say, you know, "Hey, we want to have a comfort level so that if we have critical incidents, we can respond to them accordingly, but we don't want to stockpile money indefinitely that belongs to the taxpayers." And so we set, we came up with some margins. Now, you have other cities, like Ormond Beach, for example, they follow the minimum GFOA recommendation, they set at about a little over 16%.
Yes, sir.
That's it, that's their comfort level. We decided to be in a coastal-based city, that we didn't like that, we wanted to be a little higher, and we came up with 35%. And we set that 35% more than 10 years ago, and we've had time to kind of look at that and digest it and evaluate it. And I was actually kind of glad to hear Councilman Foley say this tonight, we may be a little high on that, because we set that margin at 35%, and we've gone through two major historical storms, and we're fixing to flip the calendar over, and we're going to be way over it again. And so it's just something to think about. And sometimes, too, I think it is incumbent on us to take measured risk. And there's nothing that says that if the need is there, that we can't take a measured risk and go below, whatever our line is, whether it's 35%, 30%, 28%, whatever that line needs to be. And that part of the discussion's not going to happen tonight, that's going to happen soon in a workshop where we can evaluate, where do we want to be, talk about the historics of it, and then see if we want to move that far a little bit, and then what is left over. My point to some of that is to also say that I think our staff has done an incredible job. We have asked them for several years, find savings, find efficiencies, Wayne touched on some of those tonight. That's awesome, but it's also their job to do that, right? And we want them to do that, we appreciate that they do that. And it's our job to find savings and efficiencies where we can as well, get the biggest bang for the buck. I would also say that it's, you know, and I, and the, a couple of the charts there that the city manager provided us at the end are kind of the ones every single year we focus on quite a bit, and this one that we're looking at a lot, which is showing us the different millage options, and what does that mean, and percent of a rollback, and what are the actual dollars, is keep in mind that when our residents get their tax bills, they're not just paying City of Port Orange taxes, right? So even though we might have an increase that measures out to $38.63 a year, their liability to get an increase on the school board, the hospitals, the county, so forth and so on, all those entities. So I caution to just think that, you know, when it's only $10 more a month, or $11 more a month, or whatever those things are, just keep that in mind. And by the way, I will tell you that some of the best discussions happen this time of year on this die, is appearing, they're gonna happen again tonight, I can already feel it, so, and it's good, and they're all very respectful. My thing is tonight that I, I'm a little bit more in line with Councilman Green, I think we can stay at our current millage and allow our staff to find efficiencies and work from there. I, they have done an exceptional job, and I feel comfortable in that, having seen years and years and years and years of money rolling over, rolling over, rolling over, that we budgeted for, that we went through the pain and the anguish of this, and ultimately we didn't need. Now, we do need some of that, so I have to say that with an asterisk, because if we ever cut that to zero, then we're never going to have money for capital projects, right? And there are going to be capital projects, some are going to fall off the priority list, you know? I like Sean's comments, I see those same streetlights that you're talking about, they couldn't be any uglier, but that's a one-time expense that we need to figure out how to address that, because they're horrible. But I don't know where those are on the priority on a single purchase capital expense right now. Or even if we're in a position, because I don't know if, you know, what that's going to take in terms of having those pulled out and redone. But that being said, I'm more comfortable in the 4.9, leaving the millage where it's at currently and working from there, I'm not interested in increasing the millage at all. I want to see us working towards rolling it back to some degree. So my comfort level right now is at the 4.9750. But let's take just a moment, anybody from the public wish to come up and speak about millage rates? Come on up, Robert. Robert, I'll take you first, only because, man, it's strange for you not to get up before 8:30 and have a comment. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Mayor, when Councilman Gephardt mentioned maintenance, it reminded me about how I bicycle around the town, and I noticed over here in front of the chiropractic school, they're starting to use asphalt to fix the sidewalk. And I know, I've heard other comments over the years about all the concrete that somebody runs around and repairs sidewalks. And I've noticed that South Daytona, they have a rule that, or a law, that you can't park on the sidewalk. And I think we should do the same thing, because these outfits use the sidewalk as a work platform. And we keep getting broken concrete slabs, and so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Who's next? John, did you want to speak? Come on up.
My concern is drainage. I want to hear some comment from the diocese that this is going to be handled and taken care of. We struggled with increasing incentives for Eastport, which has stood stagnant for many years. We had a major discussion about that and finally got something passed so that we can do something with that property. This is historic Port Orange. We sit, and we deliberate, and we talk, and we don't do a lot. So this is a time to be dynamic and to really make a decision, that's what we elect you for. We don't elect you to put these initiatives on a ballot and let the voters vote to tax themselves, that's what we pay you for. So I want you to be bold and dynamic to plan and tackle these problems, they're big. Some people in this community have been flooded out three times and FEMA tells them that they got to leave. I don't want that to be me, and you should not want any resident in Port Orange to be that way. That's an abject failure of your core initiative for this city. We just can't hem and haw about this stuff. So if it takes a couple of more dollars, like Commissioner, Councilman Grubbs said, that's what we need to do. I don't, I'm not real concerned about the school board and other towns and what they're doing, I'm concerned about here. I don't care what my, my tax bill is, is crazy low compared to so many other communities. So I just want to see these initiatives tackled, staff needs the help, they need the work, they need the money to do it. And as I said before about the golf course, costs are not going down, they're going to go up. So we need to plan for that, so we can't hem and haw over another 20 bucks that somebody might have to spend on their tax bill, and worry about districts and hospitals and things like that. They're going to do what they do. If you want to live in this county, it's cheap to live here, we get excellent service, we need to maintain that, we need to fix stuff. I ride around the town all the time, I look at all the parks, I look at the stuff that needs to be fixed. I just put in a request through about park benches on Herbert Street. They're in terrible condition, it's a small thing, you know, so I don't get the struggle. So, anyway, I hope you all solve it, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Anyone else? Laurie, come on up. I'll come to you next.
So I'd like to talk about priorities. Public safety, Parks and Rec, and then stormwater. No, it should be public safety, stormwater, and then Parks and Rec. If you look at the numbers that you posted, you have half a million dollars more going to parks, all right? So let me just remind you, we had a well over 500 homes flood, $51 million in damage, 750 homes on the market in Port Orange. I'm sorry I disagree with you, Commissioner Gephardt, there is a morale problem in Port Orange, and it's because we are not putting enough effort into the stormwater. You can't say that we have 25 miles of black corrugated pipe that needs to be replaced, but yet we're still pushing Parks and Rec. I like Parks and Rec, don't get me wrong, my grandson plays at Parks and Rec, okay? But my house has flooded too many times, and all the residents around me have flooded too many times, over 500 homes, 764 homes for sale. I'm looking for another property right now, I have plenty to look at, okay? But people's property values are tanking, okay? And so it's a little easier for me to find a property now because of the inventory, but it shouldn't be that way. We should not be worrying about that right now. We need to put more emphasis, change in a different way, like Mr. Cameron said, there was some recommendation of an advisory board, maybe all of you can't handle it, maybe we need more than just you gentlemen up here, okay? I'm sorry, but if you go to social media, which clearly some of you have not, there are coalitions popping up all over this area, okay? People are pissed off, they want more, they want more money, I get it, you're trying really hard, and I give you a lot of credit for that, for what we did up at the state level. And I don't want to see my taxes raised, but we got to figure out a way to get it done. You cannot continue on with this many homes for sale and this many people continuing to flood and say that we have such a great city here. There is a morale problem, and you need to face that. We need to do more, and it does need to be different. Thank you.
Thanks, Laurie. Thank you. Come on up.
Fine lady stole my thunder, but...
Go right ahead, introduce yourself at the record.
Bob Manganello, Trailwood Drive, Port Orange. She's absolutely right, there, in the Wood subdivision, there are now six homes for sale. That's never, ever happened. On Trailwood Drive, there are three, three for sale. We, somehow, we've got to maintain and advance our quality of life in Port Orange. If it's spending more money, increasing the millage, my God, let's do it, you know? We're kind of like, you guys are kind of like pushing a snowball uphill, you know? Today, the money's good, you know, what about two years from now? What if we get another hurricane? God forbid, but you know, it's, it very well could happen. I'm okay with, you know, like the gentleman said, our property taxes are low. If you can increase my, the quality of our life, raise them, you know? You know, Parks and Rec, God bless them, I worked for them for three years when I retired from the school system. You talk about waste, you ought to look at those folks. But we've got, our infrastructure should dominate all our discussions, you know? We need great cops, we need great firemen, we got to alleviate that traffic problem on Dunlott. I know you've heard a lot about, of course, we all live here, but something's got to be done. Like she said, there are 750 homes for sale in Port Orange, that's never, ever happened. How do we, how do we stop this? How do we, how do we get a grip on it? Increasing the millage, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. But we've got to, like I said, we've got to maintain and advance our quality of life for ourselves, our kids, our grandkids, you know, you've guys got a great, an awesome responsibility. Take the bull by the horns, you know, you got to make some bold moves. Some are going to be unpopular, so what? You know, what are you going to do? But we all live here, you guys see the same things I see, you know? And the lady was right, they're killing us on social media, you know, comparing us with Venetian Bay and all the trash they got over there, you know, and all their monumental problems. I don't want to be like that. But thanks for listening.
Thank you for talking.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Stan.
Come on, Stan, at least stretch the legs a minute.
Stan Schmidt, 5574 Trailside Drive. Evening, folks. One of the things I think you need to remember, you've heard people say, you know, we should be investing more in like maintenance, or stormwater, drainage management, those type of things, and I know the staff has done a great job, I know the staff is probably trying to get, squeeze things down as much as we possibly can. Just want to remind you, this is just to set the maximum rate, so you can't go higher than this, but this sets the top, and you can go down, and you always will. By the time you get to September, wherever you pick tonight is going to be, the final deal will be lower than that. So you've got some time, give yourself a little bit of time, and see if there's anything more you can do for maintenance, see if you can do, you know, we've got broken sidewalks that we've marked as broken for the last seven years, let's, can we do anything on that? We've got the corroded pipes, can we, you know, is there a way to slide more of that in there that will make the quality of life a little bit nicer in the City of Port Orange? So you've got time, you don't need to feel like this is a pressure, you know, this is what we're going to do. And there will be people who will beat you up on social media, but guess what? Doesn't matter what you do, you're still going to get beat up on social media.
Amen.
That's just the name of the game. But don't think that you're locked in here, this is just setting the most you can go, okay? It's all you're trying to do. And you can come down, and you'll have two months to go ahead and work on this, and see if, you know, you can have, talk to your staff, you can have to talk to the city manager, you can do all these kinds of things, come up with ideas, maybe there's ways we can do some of these things that people have mentioned already. That's it.
That's it?
Well...
Anybody else would like to comment? Come on up. Can't let him have all, you can't let him have the last word. Welcome, great, introduce yourself.
Paulette Manganello, 5930 Trailwood Drive. I live next door to Jim Ward, who used to be the mayor. We, I've lived there for 44 years, raised my children there, my granddaughter, my grandchildren there, taught school at Holly Hill Middle, I'm a Floridian, I've been through Hurricane Donna when I was nine, five-generation Florida person. I, like I said, I've nev, the last two years we flooded. They said, "Oh, you're not in a flood district, you don't need flood insurance." So I had the flood insurance, but I dropped it. I paid my house off, I dropped the flood insurance, our house flooded, we lost everything. We had the walls cut out, the floors cut out, and we've lived there a long time, but we remodeled, we put new floors in, new paint, new everything, it was expensive, worked two jobs, and, you know, that was just, everything was wiped out, all of our stuff was stuck on the curb. Our neighbors were like, "Oh, my God, some over here didn't get flooded, we did, the whole canal came up." When we first moved there 44 years ago, we had a little canal on the side. He taught at Spruce Creek High School for a long while, 38-year teacher, me 25 in Volusia County. We had a little canal there before they built a big thing, and people would go by with the little canoes, "Hi, hi, we're going to Rose Bay." We never had a flood, we had hurricanes then, never happened. Now, the last two times we've had Hurricane Ian and Milton, we flooded both times. Now, the last two times we've had Hurricane Ian and Milton, we flooded both times. We've got to stop that. All neighborhood is like, oh my God. They used to say, oh, do you want to sell your house because we love your house here? We never knew Trailwood was back here, this is gorgeous. Now they're like, did you flood? And we're like, yes, we did, twice. They're like, oh, I wouldn't want your problem. So our house has gone down in price. We worked two jobs to try to make it beautiful and wonderful. He planted every bush, every tree in our yard. And now it's like, it's got to be fixed with this flooding. I don't care about broken sidewalks. I don't care about people getting extra money. We worked two jobs at, at the school system. I care about my home getting flooded for a third time. You would too, right? If you came home and your house was full of mud and water, you saw your kids' pictures on the floor, your, your, your whole thing was outside, your furniture, your beds, everything. Pictures, albums, everything you've had collected over 40 years on the sidewalk, what would you do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Anyone else? Chance? All right, we'll come back to council. Before we start making motions, anybody else want to make any comments?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm going to, I'm going to go and get started because I flooded twice. I think most of you have been in this room before, you've heard me talk about this. I, I had a great deal of, of concern today, actually, with just all the rain because the canal behind my house, the ditch behind my house started to rise and it immediately puts me back to being in, you know, ankle-deep water and, and my kids' toys floating around and it's not a, not a memory I want to keep reliving. So I understand that. But I want to also point out here with what staff has suggested at 503 and at 497, which is being talked about, which seem to be the two numbers where we're kind of getting in between, is $300,000. It, it's not going to affect what we are looking at from a stormwater perspective. We already have this master plan that has been paid for. We're already implementing that process. We know in order to do all those projects, we're going to have to get outside funding. So while it is my number one priority sitting here in this seat, especially not only because it affects me personally, but so many of my neighbors and family and my residents specifically because I'm in the older part of town, which has had the, the bulk of the flooding, this, this money does not set the whole $222 million budget. This is a very fourth of it. And then you're talking about the actual tax levy is 28 of the 61. It's a very small amount in terms of fighting the stormwater problem. We could jack this thing to 6.0 and it's, it's not going to change what we're doing with that. So I, I want to just make sure I kind of explain that part away. There might be little things we can do, but, but it's not, it's not going to be significant. So just on that thing. I also want to talk about the 35%. I'm going to keep going back to this because this is my reason for not wanting to go to the 503 is again, general fund balance, like Scott, you made a really good point. You guys set 35% as a policy 10 years ago. That was a much smaller dollar amount. When you think about what the budget was compared to today, we are 10 years removed from that. That back then might have been, gosh, I don't know, I'm going to guess, I'm going to guess $10 million? If that, but no, not even. It would have been so low. Versus now, 35% is a much larger amount. And then I also get concerned when you're, you know, it's only $38, right? It's, it's only $49 over rollback. And then it's, that's fine, but then the county does it and the school raises it. And then the electric bill's more and your restaurant bill's more and this, and it all adds up. And we have a lot of residents, believe it or not, that are on fixed incomes and, and that live paycheck to paycheck or social security check to social security check or VA benefit check to VA benefit checks. A lot of us are very fortunate and there's, but there's some of us who live here who've been here a whole, a really long time and, and they don't have that same fortune. So we have to kind of keep all of those things in mind. But yeah, I'm still, I'm still pretty comfortable with what I've said originally. I just want to make sure, I want to put a little bit of calm into people who are worried about flooding just knowing that this millage rate we set and what the numbers we're talking are not going to be the deciding factor in what we're able to do for our residents from a flooding perspective. I want to assure you, we are doing everything we can as fast as we can for all of that because there's not a single one of us up here that haven't had a family member or a very close friend who's been affected. Myself, like I said, personally, twice. And I have no concerns about this millage rate affecting those projects. So I just want to say that.
Trace comments?
I'd like to ask you a question, Reed. You just talked about several entities raising rates. Why? Why are they doing it?
I don't know if that's fair for council, but Reed.
No, I'm sure. Why, why would, why would anyone?
Some of them aren't very good at managing their budgets. Some of them have made horrible past decisions. Some of them have been impacted by...
We've, we've had, I've had to sit here since I was elected and I've had to vote for incredible increases and put them on my voting record because of years and years and years of kicking it down the road. And we had underpaid police, underpaid fire department, underpaid nades, general and carries. And I had to support extreme tax increases because it wasn't fair to staff, it wasn't fair to our residents, and we deserved a better quality of life.
Okay.
And so everyone's situation is very different.
Yeah.
I think we have moved that ball a long way down the road.
I agree. So I, I was listening to some of the history and we were talking about the 35% and how much money that was. And, and then Scott mentioned that we were at 50% at one time. Okay, within the last 10 years. But in 2003, we had to actually, was, is the largest jump on this chart right here when we were at 50% of that money. So what happened there? What, explain it.
It goes way back before that.
Okay.
And that, and that, and that, that is not reflective, that, that chart is not reflective of your fund balance. The chart is reflective of your millage rates.
Okay, but we brought the fund balance into this conversation.
Right. Think, but you got to be, again, I got to caution you to think about fund balance as money that can be used for one-off expenses. These numbers that you're looking at, what we're talking about tonight is typical operating funds of the city. This cost goes on and on and on.
I agree with you 100%.
It builds onto this.
I, I agree with you 100%. But the fund balance came into conversation of why we should not take care of the things that need to be taken care of by increasing our millage rate just a little. That's, that's where my confusion is.
All right, let me, let me try to...
I have no problem, let me finish. I have no problem reducing our fund balance. I, I really hate storing a bunch of money when there's needs out there in the city and we're not using them to fix them.
And cash only goes down in value. Inflation eats it away.
And guess what? Real estate goes down in value. So I want to ask the staff city manager this question and I apologize for not asking this earlier today. Have our assessed values for the real estate in Port Orange, is it going down for 2026? Have we gotten that number yet from the tax assessor?
We have gotten a number. It didn't go down. It didn't go up as much as it has in the past, but it did not go down.
It didn't go down? So it's, it's, it went up a little? So our assessed values have gone up a little? So assessed values and our millage rate will increase our revenue?
Correct.
Okay. And, but they have come down before in the past.
2008?
Yes. So, and, and this is, and this is what I want us to, to consider. And one of our citizens came up and talked about the number of, the inventory going up in real estate. And it's going up. Because I've been a Realtor for 30 years and inventory's going up. This isn't a hot real estate market. What happened was interest rates went from 3.5%, 6.5% and it immediately put a slowdown in, in refinancing and then it put a slowdown in new purchases. And it tightened up the money, it tightens up the inventory. The values actually start, the new sales, the pricing that they were getting back after COVID, that, that's no longer existing. We're starting to see houses stay on the market much longer. And I've been in that business since 1995. And I've watched houses stay on the market, not for six months, not for a year, for a year and a half, sometimes two years before they, they sold. So we could be there again, and then what do we do funding then? Do we say, oh, we can't? Because, because I'm guarantee you, our expenses are not going to go lower because the assessed values go lower because real estate market cools off. And it's cooling off big time. And so I want us to make sure we're prepared for two years down the road when we're in a real estate recession. I'm not saying we're going to be in one, but I owned a real estate company in 2005. It was wonderful. In 2006, after Katrina, it was nothing. And everyone talked about the crash in '08. Buddy, that stopped, started right after Katrina. It just didn't make the news because it wasn't popular. But we had stopped, I mean, a 75% drop in sales. So, and then it took forever. And then I talked, houses I sold for $265,000 were resold after the bank claimed them back for $150. And those assessed values changed. So we have to be prepared for that. We've got through the glory years of low interest rates and, you know, increased demand on real estate from COVID. It's completely different right now. So is that going to affect our revenue down the road? Where we need things done? That's, that's where I'm at. I, I, we're setting a maximum millage rate. If we do that, we, that gets sent out to our citizens. We have time to look at what the consequences are and then we can come back and have that decision and decide what our millage rate will be. We don't want to set it at what it was last year when we know we need those financial resources. Let's, let's set the high and, and go back to what I suggested or at least go to 5.3 or 5.0, I'm sorry, I'm not on that page.
Yeah, 5.325. What's, what's staff suggested?
The staff suggested 5.035. I suggested 5.75. Let's go to 5050 as a maximum. And then maybe we have to come back to what they suggested. We're asking them. They're telling us what they need. Why would we not give it to them? How do I explain why I did not give my staff what they requested and houses are flooding?
This isn't about fixing it.
It's not about that.
I know that. I personally know that.
Yeah, that, that's, that's...
Okay.
With all due respect, that's misleading the conversation.
That's, that's implying that this number is going to affect flooding projects and it is not. That is not what this money is going for.
Explain that to 65,000 people or the, the 800 homes. Because tonight, 1, 2, 3, people came up and talked about, it's, it's, it's a perception. The perception is we can come, we can raise this money for that. I don't know how you change that perception. But I also don't know how we don't give at least the 5.0325 to them, but let's go a little higher to set the maximum. Let's debate this more, let's look further into it and see. I, I don't know. I just, I think that when we go to make the final decision, this room's going to be full. It's going to be different. And I don't want us to say, oh, well, we locked in at, at 4.975 and that's the maximum we can go. That's, that's crazy. Tonight is about setting the maximum millage rate. Let's go at least to where the staff has recommended. At least give them that.
Lance, go ahead.
My turn?
Yeah, go ahead.
Wow. I, I look at this a little bit differently. And for one, I, I don't look at fund balances and I'm not looking at the sale of the Allen Green building. I look at the cost of doing business here. The, the things like the sale of the Allen Green building, in my opinion, go directly to a one-time funding of a stormwater project or going to something that, that, that's going to be there. Now, fund balance, that's a different discussion, but I don't put that into my calculations of where I'm here today. So now, the other thing that we don't talk about here on this council though is, is obviously the, is the additional millage that we already have in place for our general obligation bonds. So that adds another .4864 to where we already are, okay? And those are for what? Two things. Stormwater and recreation. I would be of the mindset to say, look, stormwater's a big deal, okay? Let's just separate the two. Let's say the cost of doing business is X, Y, or Z and, and, and let's readdress the stormwater fee if that's what we have to do. That fee is a revolving fee. I don't know if it's, is it capped out now? It's not capped out, but it's going to cap out at $150 per house, right Wayne?
We recently increased it, but you, you could increase more if that's what council would like.
And I would rather say, look, you know, if we're going to pay an extra $10, $20, or $30, let's put it to a specific thing. And let's, let's readdress the stormwater fee then. And I don't know if it's some kind of thing that can be in a millage thing because I don't know how it's fair for a little tiny house to have the same fee as a great big house when it comes to a stormwater fee. But we already have one and maybe we need to take a look into that. So we say, look, if we're going to raise funds or we're going to go out and, you know, because again, you're going to have pissed off people here and there and there about this project, project. But if your tax says, because that tax right now, that stormwater fee, Wayne, if I'm correct, is strictly for stormwater. And, and, and again, when it maxes out at 150, I don't know how much we'll generate per year on that, but it's about $5 million, right Wayne? Roughly speaking. I'd rather look into that and say, look, you know, the rest of this millage is all about the cost of doing business, okay? Police, fire, et cetera. But if we want to talk about stormwater, I'd like to keep it separate and say, let's just look into the stormwater fee, okay? Because we're already adding an additional millage to this millage rate already with rec and with the storm fee now. So we have those two bonds already in place. It's 30 years to pay back the, 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 these general obligation bonds. That's a long time for each and every house. I would rather look into saying, look, let's look at the stormwater fee so we can directly apply that money to a direct project.
Can I make?
Absolutely.
Ask you a question on that? So the stormwater fee, if we increase that, doesn't that hurt the people who live out west who never had a problem with flooding? Their stormwater fee is going up. There's 25,000 homes that are homesteaded, I think that's the number, and 1,000 homes flooded. And why would we raise the stormwater fee for all those other homes for an area that was developed prior to 1996? That's going to have, you know, the tendency is to flood. It's unfortunate that back then we weren't doing things that we do now to prevent flooding. I don't think that's a smart idea to levy for everybody who lives out west, a higher stormwater fee that it doesn't really affect them because they're not flooding.
What's the difference? You're, you're going to put it into the millage rate? Or you're going to put it somewhere else? What's the difference?
We're not increasing our millage rate for stormwater. We're increasing our millage rate so we have funds.
But you're sitting there saying you're going to increase the millage so that you can do with these projects.
No, no. I, I have not talked about stormwater with the millage increase. I, I, I know that we have fire, we have public works, we have the water department, we have recreation, we have employees, we have roads that need to be resurfaced, we have sidewalks that need to be laid and fixed. There's a lot of things that that money, we always hear, I don't have to do. I'm not talking about stormwater. Look, we could, we sat up here and talked about a project that we've invested a lot of money into to work towards to fix that we don't know if it's going to work. When you get that much rain, I, I'm telling you, if you get 22 inches of rain, I don't know how much we can do to prevent what happens on Dunlott. I don't know if it, I, I would hate to say to you all that we're going to invest this $56 million that we're going to get somehow, some way, we're not going to give up trying to get it, that it's going to be the solution to that area. We're hoping it is. So I don't want people to think that, I want to raise the millage rate for that. It's all the other stuff that we struggle with to move forward.
But just like you said, you had 1, 2, 3 people who came up here and said the first thing was about their flooding.
That's their perception that the millage rate will help their stormwater. We can't change that.
But part of our job, which I think Scott has done a phenomenal job since I've been on this dais. In fact, one time I was on vacation in Boston, I sent him a quote, is that it's not only a leader's job to lead, but to educate. And it was, as we have to make sure that when we are up here and we're making decisions, we are transparent, we are accurate, we are knowledgeable, and that we are telling people the whole truth. And that's why I said what I said earlier, is that no matter what number we pick off of this sheet, it does not affect stormwater. It's not going to change that. Now, that's probably actually in being, in an effort to be transparent, that's probably not entirely true. If we were to go down to rollback, it is going to affect a lot of things. And I would, am not suggesting anything like that. So I want to make sure I make that really clear.
All right, that's okay.
Okay, so let me ask one question. Let me ask one more question. So, so Wayne, in, in this general budget, okay, or in this millage rate, is there monies that will go to stormwater?
It is indirect. It, it's, most of the capital, the stormwater fund covers a portion of, of what we do.
I'm not talking about the stormwater fund, but any other funds within this budget go to stormwater?
I, I don't think that there's any direct in there, but there's lots of other...
But there is money that goes to capital improvement projects that entail stormwater, correct? But there is money that goes to capital improvement projects that entail stormwater, correct?
No, it's all, it's all from other outside funding sources or the Stormwater Fund.
Or the Stormwater Fund, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, so let me just kind of bring this back to circle because we're not done. We're going to be getting into some, we're going to have a moment here in just talking already. But first of all, I just want to say for everybody that got up and, and spoke and, and talked to us, truly appreciate all of the comments and respect all of the comments. And, and, and first of all, to comment on the real estate thing, that is a national thing. That is not a Port Orange thing. I can appreciate those comments. That is going on all over the United States. And predominantly, it's, Florida's a big real estate market. It is a thing all over the state of Florida. That is not a thing unique. Now, do we have folks that have gotten very, very unfortunately impacted by two historic storms in the last three years in our cities that want to sell their homes? Absolutely, 100%. And I get that that can be the factor of that. So, I, I can respect that completely, but to, to allude that Port Orange is having some kind of a, a, a real estate market thing that's not going on elsewhere all across the country, that I just, I don't think that that's the case. In fact, I know that's not the case. But, but the other thing is, is, is I want to caution the council. Our, our job up here tonight is to set a millage based on the budget that is attached to this, not perception of what might be attached to it. And we should be very cautious about that because Bob Ford used to say, perception can become reality. And if you create this perception that you did something and then you didn't execute it, you really are in deep water, pardon the pun, but you're in trouble with your, with your resident base. So, we cannot do that. We, we understand the, the public concern and demand for stormwater. I think that if that's not evident with everything we've been working on and doing for over a year now and what we can continue to work on, I, I don't know how else to make that any more evident. This millage discussion, this budget, doesn't fix that stuff. That is a totally different thing. And, and I appreciate Councilman Green bringing up the stormwater fee because I had that on my note to bring up. The, the stormwater fee is a discussion that we can have. And, and that is something we have had and we have increased marginally. And perhaps that is another discussion that we can look at. But you've got to also keep in mind that those increases, while we can make them and it may be the prudent thing to do, they don't generate that massive amount of funding that you need to execute funds immediately. Councilman Grubbs talked about possible bonds. You know, that is a discussion that we can certainly have. I think the timing for that is after we see how all of these other opportunities shake out. Funding hasn't even come from Hurricane Milton yet. All of the funding, the transformed 386, Wayne, that's all from Ian, right?
Yeah, the Ian, the, the new thing we just denied was Milton, but the other stuff was Ian.
Right, yeah. So, there's, there, there are likely.
They're mixing the storms on us. I don't want to be 100%.
Right, and we just got funding tonight from Irma.
Right.
Or recently from, from Irma. So, so I, I just think you've got to keep all that in perspective. But what I want to do is I want to bring us back to what this millage discussion truly pertains to, which is the budget that staff has prepared, the conceptual budget. And I think that that's really important. I also just want to comment this. I get that we live in a community that is very diverse, especially from a financial perspective. There are folks who can afford to pay an extra $100 a month in property taxes and it doesn't affect their lifestyle at all. We also have residents that an additional $25 a month, it impacts them. I hear from them. I have heard from them in past years. These past years, I promise you, you will hear from them. This will be the sixth consecutive year that we have had a tax increase by all, by all considerations. It, it, and not as significant as the past five tax increases, thankfully. But this will be the sixth consecutive year of a tax increase on our residents on top of increasing water rates and stormwater. So, we do have to be mindful that it is a cumulative effect and that the, the other agencies that are taxing authorities for our residents, it does matter. Because, you know, if you, if you increase a tax on somebody and maybe that only falls to 12 or 15 or 18 dollars a year. I remember this just recently, a few years ago, having a resident say, well, my Port Orange taxes only went up $9.50, but overall, a month, but overall, it went up almost 40. That's, that's significant for some people. And I appreciate the ones that it's not significant for. It's, it's the same discussion with what's the priority? Looks, some people, stormwater is not their priority. It is parks and rec. It is police, it is fire, it is roads, it is sidewalks, it is different things. And, and, and so, we have to keep everybody in mind and try to come up with the best decision. And I appreciate all of the discussion and all of the comments and all of the passions. They are all incredibly valued. They are all, they are all respected immensely. So, it's, it's never an easy process when we get to this. All right. That being said, it's, it's, it's time to entertain a motion. Does somebody want to make a motion? So, what's going to happen, guys, is we're going to make a motion. It has to get a second. If it fails to get a second, somebody's got to make another motion. We get a motion and a second on the floor, we'll vote it. If it gets three votes or more, that's going to be the max millage that we set tonight. If it doesn't, we'll open the floor back up for another motion. And you guys are welcome to kind of have some healthy conversation as we go through that process, all right? Does anybody want to make a motion to start?
And to be clear, we can come back after we've set the max millage rate and reduce it.
You certainly can. Absolutely, good point.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to set the max millage rate at five.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to set the max millage rate at five. 5.000, right?
Correct.
Or one more zero, 5.000. Because the city attorney's already looking at me. Just make sure I got all the digits. Motion, motion and a second. Any discussion on, on council?
I think we've hashed it out pretty good.
Okay. Clark, could you call the roll?
Councilman Foley?